Hello, it's me. Hey y'all. It's your girl J9E. Okay, mama missed the stream. Mama got a regular life, you know, technically, and so she got a job. So she wasn't at home. I didn't have the luxury of being at home when all this shenanigans happened yesterday. Mama was at work. She was at work. And then she had to go somewhere else. She had a Christmas party or whatnot. So she missed it, but she said, you know what? It's okay. It's okay. It's okay. We here. Okay? I'mma watch this with my babies. It's what I'm gonna do. Drewski, it's what I'm gonna do. Okay? How is everyone doing? How's everyone? I assume if you're already in here, you must have already hit the like button. I'm just assuming. I don't mean to assume. I don't wanna make a ass out of you or me. Hey, Ms. Santana, what's up, baby? How you doing? Let this thing sit still. We're gonna watch this. Some stuff happened last night. Okay, Carmen and Gonzalez showed up to the meeting. Okay, Tiffany brought her goons. I mean, like, a whole new goon squad. She brought some extra goons. Okay, how my audio sounded? My microphone all of a sudden decided to go lower for some reason yesterday. I don't know how that started, but somehow something happened and now I have to like increase my audio to get it to a normal thing. So y'all let me know in the comments if my audio is doing alright, you know, or if it just looks like mama's doing this. Y'all let me know. Okay? Done and done. Okay, y'all excited? Y'all excited? This is gonna be fun. This should be fun. I caught a couple of little pieces that they've put on the news. You know, where they do those little 30-second little clip pieces and stuff, but you know, we gotta get into it as if I was here. We gonna pretend like today is yesterday. Okay? Today is the 20th. I'm not late. I'm on time. Okay? Y'all are there. Okay? That's what we gonna do. The advantage though is is that if something, when something happens, mama, you know, mama can pause it because it's not actually live, you know? Technically, you know, it's not live. Okay, mama, it's not. You just missed it. Just accept it. Okay, I've accepted it. I just, I missed it. You know what I'm saying? But we're here today and that's all that matters. Like I said, that's all. I'm not gonna be hard on myself because I have a, I have a job. I had, I had to be at work. I missed it. All these people just sitting at home, being able to do this at 2:00 in the afternoon. I can't do it. I can't do it. I, I have a job. Okay? I have to go to work. I gotta go out there in the real world. Oh, it's terrible, y'all. Don't, zero out of 10. Don't recommend it. Going outside is, is like, just zero out of 10. Don't, don't recommend to anyone. Okay? It's overrated. It need to go to fuck on. That outside is for them and those, not for me. Okay? Alright, mama stolen. My mechanics were supposed to be pulling this thing. Come on, mama. Be productive. Be productive. Give me one second. Let me do this one little thing. Trying to be productive here. Ah, copy. Yes, honey. Oh, thank you, Angel. Let's see, three months a member. Thank you, Honey Pot. Your loyalty, your loyalty is, is, is crazy. And mama's just so happy and mama's so grateful. Mama is a grateful mama. Okay? You're gonna know that about me. You're gonna know it. All right? You gotta know. Mama is a grateful mama. Okay? She knows. Oh, hit the like button for mama, please. Please and thank you. Wait for some people to hop on in here. Hey Marilyn, where's Joe? Marilyn, where's Joe at? Angela, what's up, baby? Yes, hit the like button. Jared done told y'all now. Hit that like button. I'mma know when you didn't. I'm gonna know. Okay? You're gonna get cold for Christmas if you don't hit the like button. Santa don't like, Santa don't play about mama. Okay? Santa don't. Santa don't play about me. Okay? Santa be like, oh, oh, you ain't gonna hit the like button for mama? You ain't gonna hit it? Oh, okay. Okay. Fuck your chimney. Fuck your chimney. I'm not going in there. Santa don't play about me. Oh, no. Joe was back in the hospital. Did he, is Joe was in the hospital again? Joe, no. No, Joe. It's terrible. Santa don't play about me. Oh, yeah, no, he don't. He don't play about me. Drop my phone in the. How is you typing on your phone when you dropped your phone in the toilet? Hmm? Sean, Sean Dean, okay? How, how is you typing when you dropped your phone in the toilet? Okay? Let's see. Alright, I'm gonna paste that there. And send that there. Everybody hit the like button. We about to get this started. I know it's an early time in the day. You know what I'm saying, but had to, had to, had to, had to knock it out. We gotta, we gotta get in here. We gotta do it. Okay? Yeah, I guess he could be typing on the laptop metal. Mayhem. It could be, but I think that was an excuse that he made so he can't hit the like button. That's what I, that's why I feel in my soul and my spirit. Pin message. Got it. Okay, that should not have taken me that long. Ooh, there's a little goal thing up here. Choose the chat color. Pick a goal. Ooh, they got a goal thing on here now. They got a new thing on here. They got a goal. Pick a goal. Number of super chats. Wow, that's. Jesus. You know what? Fuck it. Yeah, I mean, I've, I've failed before. I can fail again. You know? We're gonna go with, we're gonna go with. We'll go with, fuck it. I'mma push 20. You know, fuck it. I'mma push 50. I mean, if I'mma fail, might as well fail big. So I put up this thing. It's got a, let's see, where did it, does it show up on here? Do y'all see it? Do y'all see something on the screen that says, um, that there's a goal, uh, a line? Let's see. Do y'all see anything on here that says that there's a, oh, set a timer? Let's see. Let's see. Jesus, and there's a. I'mma say all. Yeah, all tears. Okay. And share how you'll celebrate. Okay, how should I celebrate if I hit my tear? Bitter Lily, what's up, baby? How you doing? Mama's over here being ambitious. Oh, Drewski, Drewski, no. Let me push my goal thing first. Is that gonna show up on my goal now? Damn it. I guess, did it do it? Was it the thankful set timer? Um. Okay, just so I can push the button. Okay. Jesus, y'all don't push the thingy. I'm like, fuck, I'm trying to push the thingy before. But see, now I don't think those two are gonna count in the 50. 50 is the, is the amount. No, it's not the total. It's the amount of super chats. So the super chat can be $2. They can be anything. Actually, they can be anything over $2 counts inside of it. So it's 50 individual super chats is what the goal thing is. I'm, I'm seeing it on the screen. Are you guys seeing it? Are you guys seeing it somewhere? Oh, oh, that's it. It's in the chat. It's in the chat. Okay, I see it at the top of the chat. Okay, now. Okay, alright. Alright, so we gotta go. But thank you, Drewski. Thank you, Honey Pot. I definitely appreciate that. That was, wait, what? Say what? Say huh? Thank you, Drewski. And thank you, Light the Way with the Dancing Lemons. Mama is gonna count those two. Those two count. So I'm at 48 actually. Okay? The thing didn't count it because they, they jumped the gun on that one. Okay? There we go. Jared, oh, now keep in mind, it can be anywhere from $2 up. So don't feel obligated to push the big ones or something, you know? Mama definitely appreciate it though. Yes, she do. Yes, she do, Jared. Okay? Is y'all ready? Yeah, you see it? You see it roaring? Thank you, baby. Joe, there you are. Joe. Oh, Marilyn told me you in the hospital again. Why is you in there? They gotta, was she gonna set up a tent in the basement or something? That can't be, that can't be a place where you frequent. You don't wanna go there a lot. You know what I'm saying? You wanna, you wanna make a tent, put a tent somewhere. You're gonna put it somewhere else, not in the hospital. Can't be going back, can't be going back there over and over again. Mama can't have it. You trying to give mama a heart attack. Okay? You stay out of there, Joe. You stay out of there. No more hospital for you. Okay? Mama said it. Mama said it. So there it is. That's, that's law. Once I say it is law, I'm, I'm like Tiffany. Joe, once I say it, it becomes law. It's written into mama law. Okay? Let's see. Yeah, it's written into mama law in the mama books. Okay? Alright, you hear me, Joe? You hear me talking to you, Joe? Thank you, Edie Beedee. Thank you, Baby Pot. Alright, let's hop on in here. Let's see what had happened. What did we miss? I know y'all didn't miss it. I know y'all watched it with other people. Y'all didn't wait for me and I don't like that. Y'all know stuff I don't know. Y'all watched it without me. You watched it with some other YouTuber. You did while I was at work stuck behind a desk. Y'all was out here in these YouTube streets watching this without me. It's terrible. It's terrible. Okay, I forgive you. I forgive, I forgive you. Stop begging for forgiveness. I told you, I forgive you. Okay? Hey Tiffany, how you doing, girl? We about to, we about to, um, we about to hop in. We about to hop in and have a thing.
Alright, is there a motion to approve amendments for the special meeting on October 30th of 2024? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Um, is there a second? Alright, is there a motion second in discussion? All right. Trusty Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trusty Gray Everett?
Yes.
Trusty Carlisle?
Yes.
Supervisor Henry. Yes, motion passed. Next, is there a motion to approve the general fund?
Um, I would like to make a superseding motion to pay all the bills.
Oh.
I do not come to board meetings to play games, pick on money. If you did work for us, if you did anything for the township, we are here today to pay all the bills. Not one person should not be paid because you have not paid one bill for three months. So pay every vendor that's on the list.
That's funny. She says you haven't paid any vendors, but when they start trying to, they start trying to pay some of them, but take some of them off, she don't wanna do it. She don't want, she don't want them to do that. But if she like, she didn't pay nobody, not even one person. Like, bitch, you wouldn't let them. You bitch, you wouldn't let, you, you bitch?
Should not be removing anybody from this list. Nobody. So that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned second to pay all the bills.
Thank you. Thank you.
Call the room. Second. It's been motioned second to pay all the bills.
Thank you. Thank you.
Call the room. Trusty Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trusty Gray Everett?
Yes.
Trusty Carlisle?
No.
Supervisor Henry. Yes. Alright, so the motion failed. That means no bills get paid. Um, my advice to the board was to pay the bills. Other than that, all the vendors, all the people, you already messed up our credibility with vendors. Vendors don't wanna do any work because they say we do not pay them. And as you can see, we do not pay them because people get here and pay the ticks with their money. They did the work, paid the people for the work they done. So we should not be here staying, removing anybody. So this special meeting is strictly for, hold on, you out of order, you out of order. Please stop. We are here to handle business. You're here to listen to us. So anyway, okay, so please, there's a motion on the floor to pay the bills. You don't wanna pay any bills, correct?
Um, I would like to make an amended motion. So we do wanna pay bills, but I have an amended motion.
Okay, well, I'm not in favor of the amended motion. You can make the motion. Please tell people that who you wanna take out of the bills. Go ahead.
Um, there's an amended motion to take out item 199, which is Excel printing, um, 200, which is Excel printing. Um, I have questions about the toys. Um, not saying that I don't wanna pay anything for the toys, but I do have questions about that. So that's 202 and 216. Um, gonna take out 223, which is Southland RCM Communications, uh, 224, which is Southland RCM Communication. And, no, that's good. Okay, and so, um, just to be, uh, clear, so we have a new image ordinance that says that no elected or appointed official can use the township to promote their person, their slogan, their name, their image, or anything. And if they do, then they have to pay for those things. And so again.
Hey, you guys, I just noticed something. I fucked up on my goal box. Apparently, I pushed 50 of the blue, the blue ones, the blue super chats, which are the $5 ones. So this thing is only gonna light up if it's a $5 one. So those 10 ones and those 20s, the 50 is not gonna show up on here. Only five star. I'm learning. I didn't know that that was what it said. I thought I, I thought I was picking at least, no, $2. At least two, uh, $2. Only $2 ones are gonna show up. I thought I was picking $2 or up, but apparently I only picked $2 ones. So if you notice this thing still says zero, that's why. That's my goal, my super chat goal thing. It'll only show up if you do $2 ones. Mama's incompetent. I'm sorry. Just letting you know, just letting you know. I just discovered that that's what I did.
And we're just trying to make sure that the rules that are put in place are followed. That's it. We're not trying to say that anybody can't be paid, but you have to follow the rules. If you wanna be paid, so technically, the township doesn't owe these people. Any image that has, uh, the supervisor's face name, she has to pay that according to the image ordinance. So we're not just want the rules to be followed. That's it.
Alright, you're done? Oh, no, actually, about the toys. Have the toys been purchased? Are you done?
This bitch. Are you done? No, bitch. I'm, I'm not done. As a matter of fact. Have the toy, they said, have the toys been purchased? Didn't Tiffany always talking about these fucking toys, y'all?
Asking a question.
You should know the answer. Hold on. You won't be removed. We're here to handle the bills. Can y'all make sure y'all get?
Ooh, let's see if that worked. So she did a $2. Thank you, Edie Beedee. So we can see if it, if it, if it works. Still says zero. Give it, let's give it a second. Maybe the, maybe the change. Let's give it a second.
Security in here because we're not gonna do that. We're here to vote and move on. To make that statement and move on. At the end of the day, you should know what's paid for.
I'm asking a question. Do you have the toys? Are the toys in, like, the township? Or do they still need to be delivered? That's a question I have. You finished?
Are you finished? No, I, oh, I don't know. She's finished. I have a question.
Okay.
Have the toys been purchased?
Would you let me respond? I'm sorry.
Okay, well, respond then. Okay.
I am responding. At the end of the day, before y'all get here, you should know what's paid for and what's not paid.
Oh my God, bitch, that ain't the answer to the question. Have we already got the toys? Are the toys in the township? Are they, do we, do, are we just waiting for them to be delivered? Tiffany's like, are you done? So they're like, so then he's like, okay, I have a question. She's like, sure, yes. What's the question? He asked the same fucking question Carlisle asked. And Tiffany goes, can you just let me answer? And he's like, yeah, go ahead, answer. This bitch, of course, then comes out with a non-answer. Because Tiffany, because Tiffany sucks. That's why. Uh, it's, it still isn't updating. I don't know. It's probably just broken. What's it sho, is it showing up, um, is it still say zero out of 50 to you guys? Is it just my, I mean, I mean, um, you know, I'm gonna push, I'm up to refresh chat. See if that does anything. Nope, still there. Still not there. Oh, oh, they're showing up. They're showing up. Okay, so it is working. It is working. Oh, wait, wait. I know what it is. I know, I know what it is. Those two, Edie Beedee and Buck Baby, which I appreciate. She, thank you very much. Mama is a very grateful mama. Super stickers aren't on there either. Apparently, it's only $2 super chats specifically. But look, but look, don't, just, don't hold it against me, y'all. Mama is slow. Like, mama is, mama, that's my first. I didn't, I, that was, I don't even think that was up there last time I did a live. This is very new to me. Next time, I will absolutely understand how this thing works because I just fucked up. When you fuck up the first time you try something, you're almost guaranteed to do well with it the rest of your life. That's, that's the upside of fucking up the first time you try something. Like, if you steal something and you get caught the first time, you, you won't be a thief. Because when you get caught doing something the first time you're doing, you realize instantly that you're not good at that thing. So you stop. Okay? So not even like, you know what? That was wrong. I did that thing I just did. I, that was, that's bad. And so you're not gonna repeat it. You know what I'm saying? That's how life works. Okay? So it's super chats. I'm sorry. Yeah, yes. Super chats only. Super stickers. Those things they put on there were super stickers. That's why they got the little dancing thing. So it has to be a super chat. Only two super, $2 super chats will count as a part of this thing here at the top. Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cause that's why it's only two of them. Because Jeffrey Jordan, thank you very much, and Edie Beedee, thank you very much. DSB, thank you for the membership. Ooh, ooh, dab, dab. Yes, Edie Beedee, that worked. So now we understand it 100%. Hey, I fucked up. I fucked up pretty good, didn't I? When I fuck up, I fuck up pretty good. I'm, I'm, I'm good at what I do. You know what I'm saying? Shalom, my warrior sister. Yes, DSB. Shalom. Shalom. Okay? Shalom indeed.
It's a yes or no question.
Trusty, I have it, y'all. I'm totally.
So either they're paid for already, or once again, it takes before prison, if we're already talking, if we're still talking about toys.
Someone should have been paid for because you guys have come to me three months ago.
You enough.
Y'all get up here and ranting about toys? Really? Y'all hurting the people, the kids. We about to.
They ain't gotta come to the meetings to know. We wasn't at the meetings and we know. We watched it on, tell it on, on the, on the YouTube.
Every single year here in Thorntownship, every year, there's no reason why y'all should not have toys. Why we arguing over toys?
No one argued on the toys. Trusty asked the question if the toys have been purchased or not, but even, even, even without the toys being purchased, the bigger thing is the insurance. We don't have insurance. So let me be very clear. After this meeting, we still won't have certain types of insurances. So what if somebody's child got a bit, swallows a ball, or gets hurt by a toy? The township doesn't have coverage to even take care of that. We will not, we will not have insurance after this meeting. No liability, no auto insurance in there. I think three or four other insurances that we're not at. So again, we're talking about toys, but we need insurance. And then there are no insurance companies that are even willing to give us a quote.
Yeah, Tiffany got her goons in there, y'all. Y'all hear it? Can y'all hear it? Y'all hear it? Okay, these paid actors? These paid actors? Okay? Or at least promised actors. They must have been promised something. What did you promise these people, Tiffany? Okay? What'd you promise them? Alright? Cause the more people Tiffany goes out into the world and tries to find to support her, it's the more people who are, when they turn on her, it's just gonna look worse. It's gonna be, that's gonna be way more witnesses. They basically are just gonna turn into witnesses. You should be doing your crimes alone is what I'm saying, Tiffany. It's my advice to you because I care. Because mama care. That's why.
You have, alright, first and foremost, let me say this. She sounds dumb. You guys did not come to a board meeting and put the township in jeopardy. We don't have insurance because you two did not come and take care of your bills.
Now, 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 remember this. Now, you probably won't need to have just heard her say that to know that that's a story that Tiffany's been selling, trying to sell. Ain't nobody buying though, right? That the reason they don't have this insurance is because they haven't been Carlisle and, and, and Gonzalez haven't been coming to these meetings and they're supposed to be voting on insurance. First of all, voting on the insurance will consist of them having options to choose from and settling on a particular policy or insurance company or whatever. That's what the voting is. You don't vote to figure out if you're gonna have, if you wanna have insurance. You got to have insurance. Okay? So them coming would, that, that, to vote would clearly have insinuated that they have these options they gotta pick from and they need to settle in on this. But it's gonna come very clear. Cause I caught a piece of this. Okay? I caught a piece of this. Okay? Tiffany is gonna give, of course, her version of an answer, which ain't shit. To about what insure, like them not having even an option because nobody is, nobody wants to insure, no one will insure them. Right?
We got violence and Trusty Carmen did not come and vote like we should.
Vote on what? Right? Y'all didn't come and vote. Vote on what?
So stop trying to.
So if they were able to obtain insurance without you on it, so but somehow other group got the problem. I think, I think you're the problem. So is that the case here in Thorntownship? Can we not get insurance because you can't be on it?
We cannot get insurance because you did not.
Today, I got insurance on this. Insurance on here. Is it because you can't be on it? Is that because you can't be on it?
Oh, wow. The insurance company says, sure. Sure, yeah. Oh, definitely. We'll insure you. Come on. Of course. It's a crazy question you're asking. Is that bitch gonna be on it? Cause if it is, then no. Oh my God. What is, like Tiffany remind me of a Lorax. Don't she though, she's so orange. She's so orange. Like, she don't need to be wearing, that's why she looks good when she wears like a bright color, like a pink or, or like a, like something that's not orange. You know? When she wears gold, she turns 100% orange. Like, she turns into a complete and total Lorax. Like, that's why she turns into that orange, you know, the orange character with the, with the mustache, the yellow mustache. Okay? Okay? I don't know why I thought, all of a sudden I thought the, that's, that's the, the Lorax is from Horton, Here's a Who, correct? Y'all let me know. Did I just make that up in my head or is mama correct? It's giving Lorax.
To pay for the insurance. That's it. Y'all can try to spin it all y'all want. We got proof of everything. We got email change with us, uh, the broker, the company begging you guys to come to a special board meeting. We got their battle law firm telling y'all come to a special board meeting. We got everybody asking y'all to come and do your job. You guys refuse to come to a board meeting and vote to have insurance. Therefore, we don't have insurance because you didn't vote for it. That is the truth and can't be expressed in our literature for you right now. Being a fact.
It's the truthuses. Tiffany ain't lying through her toothuses. It's the truthuses. Hey Tiffany, do you hear a who? Cause Horton here one.
Email is supposed to show you that they neglected their duty to pay for insurance. So we don't have insurance because of two individuals down there, three policies. I should be asking, why did they take seven days? Seven meetings they missed. They missed seven meetings to take care of the business. We had seven hundred to make it right. And then choose out one to come. I'm only here because I want to pass the insurance, which is the other insurance that I'm here to supply for insurance and to that nature. But.
Oh my gosh, you know, like I, you know, you know, I love a good Tiffany roast and I definitely love to roast a shitty Tiffany, but it's so hard when I can barely hear her over the people, you know? it's so hard when I can barely hear her over the people, you know, hooting and hollering in the audience, like I, it's getting to be a bit much, okay, I would need for them to just, like, if, cuz if we can't hear anything, like even the people in the building, forget, forget us, we're just spectators, this is a sport, and we're spectating, okay? But the people in the building, how are they supposed to hear anything, so you, you came out in the cold, cuz it's cold as shit outside, to come into this building, and, and now you can't fucking hear because these people hooting and hollering in the fucking back, just talking constantly over, like, kinda like what I do, but at least I paused the video first. Before I start talking, you know what I'm saying? Not the same, not same same, different, different, okay? And that's gonna be funny, it's, she, she just told the security, remove anybody who's being disruptive. But then, then when this lady comes later, cuz I seen that shit, this lady comes up there later screaming her fucking head off to the podium, name adding on the list of the people to come up and even talk, she comes up there with a goddamn fucking golf club. I thought, I thought she was carrying a cane, I said, she, she not, I thought she was like leaning on like a cane. Seeing the bottom, I'm like, what the fuck, she came in with fully with a fucking weapon. Tiffany, don't say nothing, you know what, because what she came up there saying was, she, she came up there roasting and screaming at everybody else. And that lady, I'm gonna tell you something I don't like about this lady, she, she like pretending, we're gonna get there. But I just wanna point something out to you, you know when there's somebody who pretends to be like, 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 she's, she pretends to be, the lady that's up there screaming with the golf club, she pretends to be unbiased. And like she's mad at everyone, but she's fucking not, and it gets proven at the fucking end. It gets proven at the end, when, when she's so busy and she's so furious screaming at everyone else in that room, like before she's leaving the actual building, she's screaming, she can't, she goes out and then she comes back in, and then Tiffany and her goons come out, this lady holds the fucking door for Tiffany, to let her out while she's screaming at everyone else. So she's exclusively pissed at everyone except for fucking Tiffany, but when she's up there yelling, she acts like she's, like, y'all brought her in here, y'all need to be in trouble too, y'all this, and this is all y'all's fault, and like she's on everybody, but she actually, she's fucking team fucking Tiffany, bitch, you ain't fooling no fucking body, okay, and stop getting dressed in the goddamn dark. For those who don't know what I'm talking about, listen, just grab a cheater, cheater. Oh, she didn't, oh, that, I don't think they followed her outside, but she's this lady, hold on, there she is. She this lady with the green, she gonna come out a little later with a goddamn golf club in her hand. What a golf club, y'all. Oh, but she get to stay in the fucking room though, yeah, fuck you. Oh, the screen color setting on what, on their, on theirs, cuz it looks like kinda yellow? Like on, you talking about where they are? They just need to put some white light, if they put white light bulbs in this room, this room would light up white, the walls would look white, everything, I learned that recently, them white light bulbs ain't no fucking joke. Is anyone else screen color wrong, or is it just Tiffany? That's what the color looks wrong? Yeah, I don't know, she's, yeah, in that room though, it's, it's like, it's their light bulbs, they have like yellow light bulbs in that room. Is there a motion or not? Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second, guys? Y'all pay the general system fund, okay, second, it's been motioned second to pay the GA fund, uh, please go.
I have a question before we move on to the role. Um, attorney, this question is, uh, towards you, um, I had a question about, um, the items that are under citation boxes. Um, I know that's general assistance, um, and I just wanted to understand, does that still apply with the image ordinance? Um, or do they not have to comply with the image ordinance in general assistance? I'm sorry, I would have to, okay, sorry, I was just, uh, I would have to pull a copy of the ordinance to see what was accepted out, I honestly don't remember offhand right now. Do you have a copy of the ordinance handy, otherwise I can, I mean, I can pull it up on my phone.
Well, then I'll make an amended motion to take it out.
And y'all know, just like the attorney knows to my level, that GA department is the only department that solely the supervisor. But you guys keep on neglecting the people, just so y'all know what they're doing up here, because they ain't covering it, they are.
What's so crazy is though, bitch, she just asked a question, she just asked something, it was a question that she asked. Bitch, she didn't say throw this shit in the fire, she just asked a fucking question. This how you know that Tiffany's doing some shicey fucking shit, and petty she is, it's like, it's, it's not just that people are asking questions, it's like, how fucking dare you? Like, like, even questioning something that's going on around Tiffany is she takes as you, um, like basically calling her incompetent, or questioning her, her ability to, to, what she calls it, govern. Bitch, please. Oh, I'm gonna tell y'all, fucking Jedidiah said something yesterday, I think it was, I was, I was at work, when I was like at lunchtime, I was like, watching a live, you always on live, I was like, and he said something, and he said, so, so, yeah, so Jedidiah said that he thinks that Tiffany is, um, like leveraging for something. Like, 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 she has, like, people are wondering like, what, like, like, does she even expect to, is it even her expectation that she'll, she, for her to, is it even her goal to be the supervisor again, or the mayor, or whatever? Or is she like, kinda reaching for something else that we can't see, like, like, does she have a other goal? Like, what the fuck is that other goal, like, like, and I was like, oh, God, like, is it, like, like, what if she's like trying for something bigger, I don't mean like the president, which, I mean, at this point, honestly, it's like an anthill outside, I could probably pull an ant out that could probably qualify. Literally, my fricking, I think my ring light could be the president at this point, I don't think it really even matters, like, I've seen presidents come in, they can't do shit, cuz the other operating things in the, in the government don't even allow them to do anything, I've seen just people come in and just trying out. Seen all of it, I've seen all these things, I'm like, you know what, I could be the president, I could do it, sure. You know, if I can lift this cup of coffee, I can be the president, like, it's not even a big goal anymore, but I wonder what Tiffany is, what, what's her thing, what's she leveraging for? And what made me think of this now was because she always talking about governing, like, what is she trying to be, a governor? Is it a governor, is the governor bigger than the mayor, like, I don't know politics. So mama don't know, Eddy Biddy, thank you, baby. Eddy Biddy said, somebody called out, she ain't paid her, and then she didn't, she got evicted from that place, so now, I wonder why she's staying now, cuz that was, I think that was the residence that she was using as the residence of where she lives, so that she can say she lives in Dalton or whatever, but really she don't, she don't live there. But that was the residence that she was using for that. Like, I think that was the address that she was using to, to claim that that's where she lived. But that's not actually where she was living, it was like a trap house for her and her, her boyfriend, Kamal. Sammy Sam, what's up, baby, oh, happy holidays, I know, oh, my God, yeah, I can't believe that shit's coming. Oh, wait, you at Canada, is Christmas the same day in Canada? Cuz I know like y'all, y'all have like, I don't think y'all, y'all have a different Christmas, or do y'all have Christmas? I don't know the rules of Canada, Sammy, I don't know the rules of Canada. But look at that now, y'all, nineteen months a unicorn. A nineteen months a unicorn, shit. Thank you, honey pot, mama appreciate you, yes she do, yes she do. Yeah, Tiffany might be trying to be the, um, she might be trying to be the, a governor, can you imagine her being like, imagine her being in senate, like in the senate or in like the House of Representatives? Just imagine, just imagine, that's what Tiffany be doing, she be like, just imagine. Ooh, that bitch just said there ain't no food in the food pantry. I'm gonna let y'all tell me, who's the person in charge of the food pantry again? Who is it? Y'all let me know, cuz I know, there ain't no food left in the food pantry, I wonder what happened. Candy man, what happened to the food that's in the food pantry? Did somebody eat it? Maybe the person who was in charge? Exactly, Keith Price, big ass, I know, I knew it, I knew it, he ate all that motherfucking food. Keith Price, you is wrong for that, you wrong, that was for the people. That was for the people, Keith just came in there and just, just devoured that shit, you know? He took that as a personal motherfucking challenge, y'all, he said, I think I could take it all down. Yes, mhm, man in the van, the man in the van, yes, Keith Price. He cleared out the whole food pantry, Sammy, he ate all of it. Thank you, Sammy, Sammy say hit the like button, and you know, you gotta do what Sammy say, you gotta, you gotta do what Sammy say. You got to do it, remember the rules, okay, hit the like button for mama, thank you, Sammy, Sam. Keith Potamis. Oh, shit, Tiffany is diabolical. So it's not that there ain't no food to give to the people, Tiffany's not giving, you know why Tiffany's not giving out the boxes? To the, with, of the boxes of food to the people? It's not because there's no food for the boxes, it's because, if you, y'all remember those boxes that they give away? What's on those boxes? Little sticker thing, what it say, Tiffany motherfucking Hanyard. Tiffany Hanyard, they say her name on these boxes, so it's not that they're not giving out the food anymore. It's the boxes have not been approved, those boxes with her fucking name stamped on them, which is the only way she wants to give, she only wants to feed these people if she can give them a box that they gotta take in her house that has her fucking name on it. This bitch trying to be so slick, so then she go, then she say, they not, they don't wanna give nothing to the people? They don't wanna feed the people, bitch, they not eating the box? Put that shit in the old Kroger bag and call it a fucking day, like, raise your hand, if you've, raise your hand is the form of like, put a one in the chat, if you ever went to the grocery store and they handed you a box of groceries, okay, no, this shit be in a bag, okay, put it in a bag, Tiffany, and shut the hell up, it's ridiculous. Okay, if you wanna get a sticker and pay for some stickers, that got your face on them, and you wanna stick them on there, you go for it, long as you pay for them bitches. They just not paying for it no more. Ooh, now listen to that, she said, follow the rules, is she gonna tell us what the rule is, hopefully she, she tell us what the rule is. Tell us the rules. Look at that, no, 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 we ain't gonna wait a minute, this bitch, she can't even, she can't even hide her, her like assholeness, like she can't, it's like, bitch, put some concealer on that shit, okay, it's showing, okay, it's showing, it's, it's shining in the sun, okay? Cover it up, this, she can't do it, he's like, she, soon as, soon as Carmen get up, here come Tiffany talking about, okay, time to vote. And he's like, well, can we wait till she sit right there, and he like, she like, no, we can't wait. Carmen asked the, the lawyer lady a question, and Tiffany's like, we don't have time to be answering no questions, cuz we done got it. But, but Tiffany is very concerned that, you know, Carmen isn't in the room, and unable to participate, and then he, bitch, you acting like a person who's mad she there, like, I mean, Tiffany act more like she mad that Carmen is there, if you ask me. But, I mean, ain't nobody ask me, ain't nobody, who ask me, and ain't nobody ever ask me nothing, okay, don't nobody ask me shit. Hit the like button for mama, please, please, and thank you, please, and thank you, okay, five hundred sixteen people in here, hit that like, hit the like button, okay? Why you so hostile, Tiffany? Hey Lorax, why are you so hostile? I think I hear a who. I hear a who, I hear a who.
Trustee Gray Everett? Trustee Carlisle? Supervisor here, yes. Motion failed, alright, again, no more bills paid, next, is there a motion for, uh, road and bridge, is there a motion? Is there a second? Second, any special? Call her up.
That's right, Tiffany, you go, girl, you go, girl, take your ass straight to hell, girl. Did you see the devil, girl, did you see, what's his name, Beelzebub, did you see? Tiffany, you go, girl, like they say, you go, you go straight to the gates of Hades, bitch, you go, oh, my God. This person in the, in the crowd. This person in the, in the crowd, you know what I'm saying? Trying to gain some favor. Tiffany is cranky right now, so it don't matter how much y'all kiss up to her. Y'all need to understand. Y'all need to understand, okay? Don't matter how much you kiss up. She's just pissed and it's gonna be all y'all's fault. And the reason why, even though y'all supported her, e- even though y'all supported her, it's gonna be y'all's fault. You know why? Cause it can't be hers. Cause she mad. Somebody going down for this. And it ain't gonna be her, according to her. So it's your fault. Yeah, her supporters, the people who standing next to her, it's, it's their fault. Her child, yep, her fault too. She went to the gas station before she got here. Guess whose fault it was? The fucking gas attendant. It was his fault, okay? Everybody but Tiffany's fault is what I'm saying. I knew you did, Melissa. I knew you watched it. You watched it with somebody. Y'all was cheating on me. Why y'all do that to me? Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. That's all right. That's the, you know, I got a job. I got a regular job, you know? I got a regular job to go to. So I be missing out on the things that happen during the day, you know? They have this meeting and there I am sitting at work. I knew about it too. I knew about it. I was like, in fact, it was happening while I was on my lunch break still. Like, I was on my lunch break and I opened up and I was like, oh, Tiffany doing that right now? Shit. Here I am in my car at work. Some bullshit.
Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Caroline? Supervisor Henry? Yes. Motion fail. All right, moving on. Next, we have resolutions, proclamations, and orders. Uh, is there a motion to group? To do a consent agenda for this department from one to two? Well, first, is there a motion to do a consent agenda? Is there a motion?
Awesome, Joe.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's great news, Joe. That's great news, Joe. No more hanging out in the hospital for you, Joe. No more of that. No more.
Is there a motion and second, caller? Trustee Caroline?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Henry, I mean, um, trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to group number one, number two, and number four in the consent agenda?
Let's see what these are. See, one is property tax limitation. Jason, send it his house. What's up, boo? What's going on? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You know, I do what I can do and I can do it. You know what I'm saying? I've been considering hopping on a plane. Very small consideration, you know? But consideration, no doubt, okay? No less. I'm like, what would it be like to be in a room with a Tiff Tiff? I feel like the air gets real, I feel like, I feel like, like my asthma would probably start acting funny if I was in the room, like, I don't know how y'all, uh, deal with her without criminal charges, like, I don't know. I feel like, you know, just, just no, just no. I don't think that I'm built, I'm not built to be tested. That's why I like to be, I like to just chill out on my own. I'm not built to be tested. If I was in that room, they would just, they would have to rem- they would have to remove me. You gotta know what you could take, what you can't. Know what I'm saying? Let's see, tax limitation act for the general fund and general assistance fund, okay? Property tax limitation act for the road and bridge. Do they even have a bridge in Dalton? Hey, hey, Jason, do they have a bridge in Dalton? Does the Thornton Township have a bridge? And what's the water that it's over? You know? Let's see, uh, ordinance, general fund and general assistance fund tax levy ordinance. I don't know what that is. Not gonna pretend I do. Road and, road and bridge fund. Oh, lots of roads and bridges. Okay, I understand why you wanna put them together. Got it. Got it.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Is there a second? No, there's no second.
Second. All right, caller.
Oh, thank you, pastor man. Pastor man.
Are we gonna vote on the other ones as well?
We gonna do number three. We are moving back one because we have to do something different. So we're doing one, two, and four.
What is number three pertaining to?
Uh, we, we gonna get to that, sir. We on, on the one that you guys just agreed to group. So we're grouping one, two, and four.
Jesus, Joe.
Right, trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Caroline?
Yes.
Trustee Gray? Supervisor Henry?
Supervisor Henry? Supervisor Henry. Hey, Tiffany, payin' fuck attention, bitch. What are you doing? But everybody, everybody gotta wait for her ass, though. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Everybody else gotta wait for her. Yeah. There's time to wait for the Tiffany, though. There's time. Oh, oh, yeah. How much time we got? Time to wait for Tiffany. That's how much, okay? But everybody else, well, specifically Carmen, she ain't got no patience for Car- she's pretty pissed at Carmen, okay?
All right, um, so for number three, it is approved? Motion pass. Okay, so for number three, it was the general fund and general assistance fund tax levy. Um, the reason why I pulled this one from the agenda is because we have to first pass the budget. You cannot levy the people's tax money without telling them how you're gonna spend their money. So that's the reason why I removed number three from the agenda.
Wait, wait a second. I thought we were voting on the insurance products, right?
This, that's a tax levy. I just read it. Just ask me. Three, you see? Just read that to you. We just approved one, two, and four. That's what we just approved.
Wait, so we, we just approved under section seven or eight?
Okay, I just read, it's a resolution, proclamation, and orders. Then we went through, do we, we like, would we like to have a consent agenda? Everyone said yes. So then after that, we grouped one, two, and four. And everyone agreed on one, two, and four. Now, the last one is number three, which is the tax levy.
So number, so why make a motion that, make a motion that we approve, uh, number three?
That's the one that I just told you I removed from the agenda.
So why, why are the other ones different?
Because this is for our general fund and general assistance fund. The other ones got nothing to do with it.
You can't pass a tax levy before you pass a budget. I mean, you shouldn't, but you could. You can still do it. No, we have to pass this before, you know? Attorney, you answer that question, attorney? Can we pass this tax levy without approving the budget? So, attorney?
Already got a counsel that told me we cannot.
Oh, my God. You already got a counsel? Is it the same one that the judge said can't be nowhere around here? Is it dolomite? It's dolomite, ain't it? I know what it is. You ain't gots to tell me, girl. I know it's dolomite, okay? I know it is, right? Oh, my God, I thought it was so funny. Uh, uh, Jedidiah said, he sat next to, I don't know that guy, oh, Max, that Max guy that, the, the, the lawyer dude, the black lawyer dude that looked like dolomite, looked like he from, he should be in sepia tone, like, like. He looked like, to Jedidiah said he thought he lo- he thought, he thought he would stink. Like, he just looked like he was stink. But when he sat next to him, he said he didn't actually smell fine, but he thought he would. Like, he's so funny. Jedidiah said, you know, I thought, I was, I kinda hoped and thought that he would stink, so I could be like, eh, gonna stink, but he actually didn't stink apparently. But, yeah, I see what he was talking about. He definitely, cause he looks like he just rolled up, he looked like every day he just rolled out of bed. You know what I'm saying? But it was a suit. Like, there was a suit that he rode into, but he just, he just looked like he rode out of bed and fell in a suit. You know what I'm saying? He's giving very much seventies, seventies vibes. You know what I'm saying? He should be in the sepia tone. For those who don't know what sepia, I'd say that a lot now, like, those who don't know what sepia tone is, you know, the pictures from back in the day, like the seventies and the eighties? You look at old pictures and they kinda look, they got that brownish hue to them. They look like, kinda like this goldish-brownish sunset kinda hue to them. That's called sepia tone. And that's what he looked like. He looked like he should be in sepia tone. Like, if you saw him in a picture, you would expect him to be in sepia tone. That's all I'm saying to you. Hit the like button for mama, please. Please and thank you.
I've been getting other accountants involved and the council said you cannot.
Unfortunately, we need to see proof of that because we don't believe.
It don't matter. I'm not gonna vote on it, so it don't matter.
Why made a motion? We didn't.
You can make the motion whenever you want. You have to come back for another board meeting and you have to have a budget in place in order to. Okay, so listen, so listen, let me explain this to y'all. How are all day levying taxes and they didn't?
Attorney, can you advise on this?
At all. Where's the budget? So why you levying tax money and y'all don't even know?
How is this even allowed? Like, they're asking, the, 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 the reason they have an attorney there is for this purpose exactly. Somebody thinks that they can do this. Somebody thinks that they can do that. They ask the attorney, what is the thing? Which one is it? Tiffany won't allow the lawyer that's there for the job right now to do the job. She then just referencing without showing proof of what the lawyer said, this other lawyer said. Not the lawyer being there, not bringing them up so that they can say, and then the two lawyers can debate which one it is. None of that. We just supposed to take her word that her sepia tone lawyer that the judge already said can't be there. That he told her that this thing she wants is okay. We just supposed to take her word for it, okay? And just shut the fuck up. Okay, I was just, I was just trying to be, make sure I'm clear on what's happening here, okay, Tiffany? This your world. We just some fucking squirrels, you know what I'm saying?
You spend the money, attorney, could you please have my guidance? You cannot, you cannot levy tax money and you don't have a budget to tell the public how you gonna spend their tax payments out. Y'all not understanding. For those that don't get it, that's true. For those that understand what I'm saying, you know you cannot levy tax money without a budget. So they gonna levy money, like, let's say, they raise your property taxes, right? And they levying the tax, the fuck, forty-nine percent. How are they gonna spend the money? What's the plan to spend the money? They even gave you a plan, or they just raised your taxes, though, right? That's what they're up here doing, but you not listening. You're not listening. They're telling you what's happening. But everybody just, just pass it, just pass it. So, no, you're not.
On this attorney, I think I have enough information.
So I have not had an opportunity to research this exact question, but some very quick research, um, right now as we're sitting here tells me that, yes, it is generally advisable to approve a budget before you approve a levy. But, 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 but my, but the concern, though, is that you have a timeframe in which to approve the levy. If you don't approve the levy and file it by the first, the last Tuesday in December, then you can't levy taxes next year. So it would be my advice to pass the levy.
Correct. So if we pass the levy and if what the, uh, Henry is trying to say is true, then it wouldn't matter. However, if we pass it, then we're in good shape?
I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say necessarily that you're in good shape because you still do need.
Correct, but I mean, it would be good.
However, there is, there is a specific timeframe in which the levy does need to be approved by, and granted, there also is a specific timeframe in which the budget needed to be approved by. That obviously hasn't happened yet. So this is a very unorthodox thing. There actually is nothing per se in the law that addresses this that I have found. Uh, I do see a statement from TOI, which is the Towns officials of Illinois, and it does say that if the fiscal year begins after the levy must be adopted, then the budget appropriation ordinance must be adopted before the levy. So as a general rule, yes, the budget appropriation ordinance should be adopted before the levy. However, my concern is that if you don't adopt it now, even if that, that, that condition prerequisite is required, that you may, that the township may be putting itself into another bad position. So my suggestion would be, of course, to pass the budget and the levy. But if we can't get both done, at least pass the levy so that the, the levy could potentially be amended later. And, and budget also can be amended later. But I would, I just have a concern about not, not taking.
So what's the deadline, uh, attorney?
Tiffany, stop interrupting the fucking attorney. This is where any kind of progress could, it's like, okay, fine, the attorney's explaining the thing. So now everybody's kinda gaining some insight on this thing. Now, something productive could have happened after that. But watch Tiffany come in with the, with, with the shitty thing to say to assure, because Tiffany wants everyone else to be combative with her. Please don't think that Tiffany has not become accustomed to the world being against her. If the world, if everybody just constantly, like, you would think that Tiffany loves, like, loves to just be loved. But no. This is a type thing, right? This is a type thing. This is, this is her personality. I'll tell you, I know this bitch. I know this bitch. If everybody was just loving her, everyone, everyone was just like, oh, my God, she's so great. She's the, she's the, the, the goal. She's gold. She's, you know, her relationship's perfect, her life's perfect, her job is perfect. No one is better than she. Tiffany would not be happy. Tiffany requires haters, what they, she calls haters. She requires those. She actually kinda almost, i- it, it's her, it's her push. It's the thing that pushes her to, like, she wants, she, she likes to be the only one. So that, and, and sometimes that means the one who is the most hated. Right? Like, if somebody came in and they were being hated more than she, and she, and they were getting a bunch of negative attention in that area, and people just stopped dealing with Tiffany, Tiffany would be pretty fucking pissed at this person for pulling that attention away from her. Like, like, it's, it's a, it's a super, it's a superpower. Not everybody can sit in a room that's on fire. Not everybody has that, that talent. Like, that's, that's a talent. It's a shitty talent, but it's a talent. And that's what Tiffany has. Tiffany has that thing that not, most people, most people do not possess that. It's not a normal thing. She thrives in chaos. That's where she thrives. She's like crabgrass that grows in the s- in like, in the sewer system. You know what I'm saying? She's crabgrass in the sewer. Where in the fuck did I pull that from? Like, that shit is crazy. Okay, yeah, she's a drama queen. I get, yeah, that, you know, that's a simpler way to put that. Yeah, that is a, that, yeah, she's a drama queen, for sure. For sure. That's a, that's actually a simple way to put that, okay?
It's the thirty-first prepared for tax week, correct?
It is the last Tuesday in December, which this year is the thirty-first. That is correct.
So you guys.
To be clear, that is the date that it needs to be filed.
I understand. So they have time to have a special meeting and then they can also have the budget, which I had the budget on the prior agenda on Tuesday to pass. But you guys took it off. And made this agenda, but the budget was on here to pass the budget and to pass the tax levy, because I'm doing everything the right way while everybody trying to, uh, circumvent the process. But everybody sitting here jumping through loops and hoes and not basically crossing their teeth and dining.
Oh, my God. She said, everybody here is jumping through loops and hoes and donuts and shit. It's, it's hoops. Bitch, it was hoops. The words you were looking for, it was hoops. She like, y'all jumping through ring lights and shit. You're like, oh, my God. Just every word except for the word that you used, bitch, okay? It was hoops. Jumping through hoops. Tiffany, oh, my God. Jesus. She can't admit she wrong, though, so she gonna act like that's what she meant to say?
And that's what you should do. So as you can see, you need to call another meeting to pass the budget.
We're here, we can do it right now. We're here, we can do it right now. There's a motion and second.
It's no budget on the agenda that y'all took off. I had it on the agenda right here. Look. Budget.
Over, that's a second.
It can be a motion and second if you want. I just.
Why would you take the budget off, Tiffany? Tiffany, why would you take the budget off? The budget's there every time except for the time that they're there. Interesting. Yeah, that's interesting. That's interesting in that it's not there. Then she gonna show us this piece of paper. The, the, the budget, it was right here. It was between this and this. It was right in, it was, it was this. This was the budget. It's not the budget anymore, of course, because, you know, it disappeared the moment I found out you guys were showing up, but, you know? Just take my word for it. I'm good for anything. I'm good for my word. Right, Tiffany? High five.
Tell her when she touches my shit in a second. You still ain't listen.
Ooh, hit the like button for mama, please. Like button for mama, please. Timer ended. I wonder how you reset it then?
There's no budget. People are with the previous budget. It's presented to. There's no budget. People on with the previous budget, it's presented to the board. And we are, but there's no budget on here. They took it off the agenda, so you can't even vote on the budget today because they was being funny.
Nobody's paying money. Robert, why, uh, can I ask Robert a question? Why wouldn't he even adjust the budget? We know.
Well, we're not on the budget right now. We're talking about tax levy, so we don't want to get off track. We don't want to get off track. Only reason why budget came.
Bitch, you just told the, you just said that the budget, that they took the budget off. You, you all there talking about they took the budget off and that's why we ain't got the budget and the budget, they stole the budget. It's in, it's in Carlisle, Carmen Carlisle's purse. It's in her jacket pocket, y'all. The budget's in there, okay? But we ain't talking about that, okay? Well, yes, yes, you were. That's how we, that's why we talking about it, because you was just talking about it.
A budget because you have to pass a budget before you pass the tax levy. And that's what I've been asking y'all to do every board member that y'all have not attended. So you had seven different opportunities to pass a budget, but you didn't show up.
Okay, so, so what Tiffany's saying now is that, so, so now that, you know, you guys, look, Gonzalez, Carlisle, y'all have missed, y'all had seven opportunities, twenty thousand opportunities, okay? Sixty kajillion opportunities to pass the budget, but it's too late now. It's too late to apologize. It's too late. Yeah, yeah, I said it's too late to apologize. I'm sorry. It just happened, okay? But she's saying that it's too late for the budget. You, we, you guys failed. You didn't pass it and now it's gone. Okay, good. Since you don't want to talk about it now and you telling us that we done fucked up because we ain't pass it and it's, it's just too late. Don't bring that shit up next time we ain't here, okay? Let me guess, next time they don't show up, all of a sudden Tiffany's gonna be, she done found a way to, okay, we got another opportunity for the, for the, um, you know, to talk about this air budget. This bitch, she diabolical, y'all.
So here we are now at the ante hour trying to pass stuff and y'all doing it wrong. So no, I will not be part of, of you passing a tax levy the wrong way. Pass it the right way, pass the budget. Y'all hear all the way from March to pass a budget. March of this year, twenty twenty-four, we're now talking about the next budget cycle. That's how bad this is, guys. This is how much they neglect their dues. But play the game, kick the kid out of the road. No one.
This bitch ain't passed the budget in four years. Tiffany, you ain't passed the budget in four years. It's you talking about the last month and a half of me. It's that part. You complaining about the last couple of months, bitch? Really? The, oh, that's what you cons, oh, that's what you concerned about. Oh, I was just checking. Tiffany, I was just checking, okay?
Taking care of the business up here, the last two trustees, but they come here and grandstand and talk about why, uh, we need a tax levy all of a sudden. You got to the thirty-first to make it right.
Just another ploy.
It's not a ploy. Just like it's a budget, we got no insurance, right? We don't have no insurance because y'all didn't come to board me.
This is your politriks.
No, it's yours, sorry. And I think the people see through it right now.
We can vote on it right now and it's done. As you said, we can vote on it right now and it's done.
We are, we are gonna vote on it. Not right now. We're gonna vote on it, have another meeting, so we can pass this the proper way.
There's a motion and a second, call the robe. There's a motion and a second, call the robe.
We're not, we're not passing this.
Attorney, the, the call the robe and let it pass or fail. That's Robert Turus' order that you like to talk about so much. That's Robert Turus' order that you like to talk about so much.
Ain't that funny? Imagine that this was your government. Imagine, imagine. Imagine there was like, like seven people. Imagine the government, the whole government of the whole whatever was consisted of like just seven people. Well, really just five people. So five people. And this is how they interact with each other.
There's a first and a second, call the robe. No, no.
I'm definitely not voting on this. Just told you the process. The attorney just told you the legal process and you still want to do it the wrong way.
But the attorney.
No, she did. She did tell you. She did tell you, but she told you the law. The law is to have a budget and then the tax levy. How you passing a tax levy?
Call the robe. Call the robe. You just don't want to, you just don't want to be on record voting no against it. That's all. Call the robe. There's a first and a second, call the robe. You just want to be on record, not voting no against it. That's all. It's just another trick. It's another ploy to have another agenda with things up there that shouldn't be out there. Call the robe. Call the robe. There's a first and a second, that's call the robe.
Yeah, she wants it to be like, she's like, no, we gotta have another meeting, so you guys are gonna have to come out again. They should be like, oh, don't worry, we gonna be here every single time now. So you can call as many meetings as you want to, okay? Let's just do them when mama ain't at work. That'd be me. Do the meetings when I'm not at work. It's fucked up that y'all did this to me. Why would y'all do this when I'm at work? How am I not supposed to take this personally? Hit the like button for mama, please. Please and thank you, okay? As Buff Pro would say, directed at the tantrum tip, taser. Oh, to you guys who don't know what Buff Pro is, you know who, uh, Cinnamon Toast Ken, anybody? Put a one in the chat if you are aware of who Buff Pro is, and if not, do you know who Cinnamon Toast Ken is, okay? So that I may be proud of you. Yes, that is Saucy Sam and I's mutual favorite YouTuber. That is our favorite, our favorite YouTuber. Cinnamon Toast Kizan.
First and a second.
We're not, we're not voting.
There's a first and a second, call the robe.
I just told you. We're gonna do it the right way. We're gonna call a special meeting. We're gonna pass the budget and also, we pass the budget and we're gonna pass.
Clerk, there's a first and a second.
Who motion first, same?
They're gonna call the robe for the budget.
Well, just like pass. Trustee Carlisle, in a second. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry. Let me reverse that. I called, I had a motion and a trustee Carlisle second. It was, uh, item three under section seven.
And they treat how I get a budget and then the tax, they're trying to pay a tax levy without a budget. And they're saying you just have a special meeting and you pass everything the right way. They're saying. All right, so.
Anybody else be wondering what the fuck she be, because she be, she does this thing where she just be like staring at people right in the side of their fucking face. I be like, I wonder what she be saying to people. Like what do people say to this lady? Like. I always just, like whenever I see her talking to somebody, I always imagine it, this is how I imagine it. I imagine it being like, come on. I imagined, I imagined this lady is saying like, come on, just, just, just do what she say. Jesus, maybe she'll shut the fuck up if we just, if you just, just go, just pretend, just pretend to go along with it. Come on. That's how, I don't know what it is, but that's, whenever I see her like staring at somebody else, just side of their face like that, I always, that's how I see it. That's how I hear it in my head.
All right, trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Gray Ever. He trying to pay the tax levy.
Is to approve the ordinance, general fund, general assistance fund, tax levy ordinance. That's the motion.
No, it's, I, I, I'm one of the people that's in the range of taxes that I, where I can't afford my taxes. They getting too high. And I don't see why we should levy against it before we know what we need to levy for.
Yeah, you have, you mean trustee Carlisle. Supervisor Hanyar. No, you see, they try to raise your property taxes. Wake up, y'all. Next on the agenda, on the new business, you see. Is there a motion to?
Tiffany counts on people not knowing what the fuck is going on and not understanding how things work. She, she like, that's, that's how she thrives. That's how she got her suit. You know, like that's how she purchased her suit. She likes to like, she, oh my God, it's hilarious. Hey Jim, what's up baby? How you doing? Gerda, hey boo, you doing?
Travis.
Consolidate one, two, seven. Is there a motion for a general for one, two, seven?
So, aren't it?
Is there a second?
What was it?
All right, my motion is active. In discussion?
Yes. Uh, what is, the item three, what is that exactly? It's only initial item.
Okay, um, that's our insurance coverage.
Here we go. Here we go. Here we go. Here we go. All right, so this is the insurance coverage stuff. This is what I was telling y'all about earlier. Very important. I'm gonna need for y'all to listen, okay? But before you listen, I'm gonna need you to push that like button, okay? They're about to tell us about this insurance. We're about to hear it confirmed that it's Tiffany's fucking fault. That nobody wants to insure that Tiffany because she's a goddamn liability. This is what we about to hear about. But you can't hear it. Until you hit the like button. You, I'm sorry, I didn't make the rules. Okay, I did. I did make the rules. That was a lie. I made it. I did. I made the rules. That's true. Hit the like button for mama, please. Please and thank you. Please, please, please. Thank you, okay? Everybody hit it? And it'll put a one in the chat if you've hit the like button. Yes, yes Tiffany, did you do it? Did you? Oh, you did. You're here, Tiffany, you're here. You made it. You made it to Mama's Live. Yes, you did, okay? I know it's hard to tell what's new and what's not, because I know y'all have noticed that this, this hoodie gets a lot of play, you know what I'm saying? It's very soft, okay? Mama, it's a creature of habit, okay? I get home and I throw on the same shit. It's just comfortable. It was comfortable. I'm forty-six, I like to be comfortable. I'm gonna live out the rest of my days comfortable. You hear me? Comfort table, comfort table, okay? That's me. All right, let's hop in. Somebody let me know how many likes I got so I can know, so I can see, because thing can't let me.
Find more, because Robert is the one that deals with this. Come, come up, so you just find these items, please. And just for the record, so everybody understands what's happening, all these are, are insurance coverage for crime insurance, um, cyber insurance, things of that nature. This has nothing to do with property and casualty or vehicle insurance. This is strictly those items. Today is the deadline to pass this. This is why I am here. Other than that, I will not be in this building. Um, once we pass this, then this will be ineffective. Go ahead, Robert.
I'm gonna repeat the question. The, uh, number three, uh, approve the I P N G. What, what line is that?
That's number three.
No, no, and say what line type of insurance is that?
Um, that's, that's for general liability, club of official insurance, um, pretty much that's for all of our insurance. That's the extending requirement.
Okay, so and what does that cover us for?
Um, that covers us for.
Don't take a time.
Time period debt is from, um, December first, twenty twenty-three to November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Nothing after December first, twenty twenty-three.
Do you see what I mean? Do you see what I mean? And the person who's singing, guess what? That's not even a Tiffany hater. That's a Tiffany lover. That's one of Tiffany's, that's one of Tiffany's like, her little cronies. I recognize his voice. I don't know who the fuck he is. I couldn't pick him out in the lineup. I have no idea what he looks like, but his voice, I can, I can visualize it. But he's singing in there. I mean, there's like a volcano with these people's name on it. You know what I'm saying? Like I just. It's just these people for me. Just get your ass in this volcano. You know what I'm saying? Get your ass in there, okay? Oh my God, I can't stand it. Hey, Wi-Fi, hey, Wi-Fi, I know who you are now. Wi-Fi, everybody, Wi-Fi, who's in my chat? See him? He was in, I, I did a, I was in, um, I was in a live stream. I came up on Jedidiah's, uh, his panel a couple of days ago and Wi-Fi that's in here, he was on the panel too. I recognize the name. See Mama's memory is set up a certain way. What's going on, Wi-Fi? What's going on? Yeah, he over there singing in the background.
Is everything you thought?
Oh, thank you for the, uh, membership, late the way. Appreciate you, baby. Yes, I do. I definitely do. Absolutely, I do, okay? For sure, for sure.
So why are we? Uh, so the way it works, our insurance, um, uh, uh, the broker is here for passing, they can be here, but basically, our insurance works on a claim thing. So we only, so if there's something that happened in the past and then claimed again, they, our insurance company will not. So anything, so if they make a claim for something today and it happened, and let's say something happened before December first, our insurance company would not pick it up. So this is, um, by, it's called tail code. And so, yeah.
So something that wasn't claimed in the past year, but then it's claimed that it's in state of jail.
Because it, for our insurance, it works on two things. It works on what time period it happened and what's the date of the claim.
Okay, I understand that. Uh, okay. Uh, what, do you have any updates on the general liability of those?
For more, December first, one fourth?
Yes.
Um, our brokers are working very hard on trying to, um, I, I have no, no real update, uh, that working on.
Is there any paperwork, uh, stating that why they have not, somebody has to pick it up? You know, maybe like say if I'm trying to get some coverage and they deny me, I mean, they're gonna come back to me and say, hey, you did it because, you know, he's got four tickets and eight speeding tickets or whatever, you know?
So, that's what I was wanting. General, it says, um, just some, I, I, uh, I don't want to speak to you.
Exactly. Oh, my bad. I accidentally pushed the button thing and moved back. You see that? Oh, well, I don't want to say, you know, you know, that it's Tiffany's fucking fault, but yeah, it is. Is it, you know, what would be the reason why? Look at this, look at this.
December first, twenty twenty-three to November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
It wasn't claimed in the past year, but then it's claimed that it's in state of jail. Speeding tickets or whatever, you know?
General, it says, um, just some, I, I, uh, I don't want to speak too much because, um, they told me a lot of this had to be talked about in executive session, um.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know what they did. I know what they said. It's Tiffany's fucking fault. I'm not stupid. I'm not gonna insure the fucking devil. Who insures the devil? He's always on fire. No. Not gonna be able to do. No, baby, I'm not gonna be able to do. Uh-uh. No, absolutely not. Who is gonna, who, who would do that? It's like somebody insuring Dennis the fucking menace. That's so, your money is just gonna be gone. You know, they, they gonna pay one, one payment and, and you gonna go bankrupt as a company, you know what I'm saying? No, absolutely not, okay? He don't want to say. I hate that. It's like, this is the government. They're asking you this question for a reason. You, you, you supposed to be obligated to answer this fucking question. But he just gets to go, I don't really want to get into that, you know, the reason why, you know, because Tiffany's sitting right there, like, I mean, if I say this, I'm fired, you know? Just do it. Just do it.
Well, I would say one thing is a lot of the media press and the TV on YouTube, I would.
Oh, it's YouTube's fault. Oh, it's YouTube. Oh, YouTube. Oh, they don't want to insure her because of YouTube? Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, uh, okay, okay. Because evidence, I think that's what he meant to say. Because, well, because of all the evidence that's been posted on YouTube. Of what a liability she is. We couldn't do it. We just couldn't justify it, okay? We couldn't justify it.
I, I think you should have a conversation with the broker about that. And she's open to talk to you one-on-one or two or four, come here anytime. But, but some of those who are not feel comfortable with, with the broker, uh.
You wouldn't feel comfortable. You wouldn't feel comfortable saying why. Why, why would, see, see, he didn't say, oh, it's a lot of stuff. It's just a bunch. I wouldn't know what to start with or how to get into it. Like, you know, I was gonna miss, you know, like confuse anybody or anything like that. So I'd rather be sitting down. No, he said he don't feel comfortable saying it. Translation, Tiffany's sitting right there. What do you think? I'm fucking crazy? Like that's a. I'm not gonna say that shit with Tiffany standing right there. That, that, it was her fault. I'm not gonna say, you want me to say it's her fault? With her in the room? Hell no, okay? Horton her to who? I'm not saying shit, okay? I'm not saying shit, okay?
What's turnaround generally on something like that? So say. Once, say we do talk to the broker, they find something or whatever, what's? How long you don't see?
I, I wanna say our brokers, they're, they're working so hard, we have. We just don't have, we had that one offer.
No, no, I'm saying if, what, if we, once we, something is found, uh, how fast?
Oh, yeah, that was, uh, right now, it's, it's an emergency. So once we find something, we will have to do an emergency meeting. Read it to the board, you have to prove it. So as soon as we find something, twenty-four hour, we can even say meeting that same day. So as soon as we, we find something, you might get a call, hey, can you come in?
Just show them.
Show, you gotta show up to the meeting. If it's twenty-four, that'd be the only thing on the agenda, cuz it is considered emergency. We got emergency meetings within twenty-four hours, turn else again, speak on that more. But let's say we find something at noon, I think we can have a meeting in, within that hour, if you guys.
Okay, thank you, Robert. And, and, and just a third, I do completely agree, this is an emergency. And should, should you guys find insurance that will cover the township that the board is agreeable to? I do think that an emergency meeting should be called and that the board should vote.
Like I always have told us, they should have an emergency meeting. They should have a special meeting when we did have courage. And we put it on agenda, put on agenda, but them two never showed up. I hear you. Alright, so it's a motion and a second on the floor, please go on.
It's so funny how solid it is that it's, it's somebody else's fault. But, but when it come time to point out something that clearly was Tiffany's fault. Oh, they're don't, they're not comfortable speaking about it. Yeah, yeah, we would have insurance, but these two right here didn't show up and that's the whole reason we don't have it. And then they're like, oh, so what did they broke, what did they, what are they saying is the reason they don't wanna insure us? I don't feel comfortable saying that. Well, it's, it's obvious if it was their fault. Then he would feel just fine saying that. So clearly, it was about Tiffany, right? Like, if it was about the other side, he would, he would be happy to say it. But it's about Tiffany, so he don't feel comfortable. And Tiffany is so oblivious to how psycho she sounds and how psycho she behaves. That that seemed, that felt just normal as shit to her. Like, this man is standing up here and he has to say shit like, I don't feel comfortable pointing out that it's all her fault. Like, he, she, she don't, she don't feel ashamed. She don't feel like. You know, like, damn, I fucked that up. You know, that is, oops. Nothing. She don't feel nothing. She just feels like, that's right, you better. You better not fucking tell them that that shit's my fault. Okay, moving on. You know what? She's a fucking psycho. And I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say this. Anybody who's standing behind her, I say it with gusto, okay, and confidence in my fucking chest, okay? You, that's the, that's the, that's some scum of the earth type shit. Okay? Like, you, 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 you hanging out at the bottom of a fucking volcano. And it's not because you, there was, there was, like, your brilliance told you that there was gold down there in them there hills. Okay, it ain't, it's cuz you a fucking idiot. Like, this is what it is, like, it just is. I didn't make the rule. Okay, I did. I did, I made the rule. I lied again, okay? I did, I made the rule. But it is, it is what it is. I live in reality. I live in reality. This type of shit. This is, this is, you, you are the fucking enemy. You are, you just are. Like, like, it, it's, oh, that sounds terrible. Oh, but give people a chance. No. It's giving people a chance that have landed people. You know, people ended up in the, in the, the worst things in all of history because somebody gave somebody a fucking chance when they knew better? Like, when you see the devil and you go, you know what? He just needs your grace. No, bitch. You need to lock your door and stop talking to this piece of shit. He's gonna burn your fucking house down with you in it. And he gonna laugh. Okay? No. The smart thing to do is to avoid these people at all costs. That's the smart thing to do. Fuck that, the, the, you could be, you could be graceful to somebody without even speaking to them. Be like, you know what, I'm gonna go in my house and, and ignore the shit out of you. That's the grace you gonna get. But don't try to be friendly with these fucking people. No. They need to be isolated. They need to feel isolated. When they wanna, when they want to not be isolated. When they care about that. They will come out and they will act like they got some goddamn sense. That's, this is how, this is how it works. Let mama tell you. Okay, I'm telling you. Stop with this giving grace to things that are not graceful. Okay? If you, if you just simply must give grace, give silent fucking grace, ignore it. Okay, it's contagious. Not that it'll make you be evil, but it will make you bitter. It'll make you bitter, because dealing with horrible fucking people all the time will make you bitter. It will. It just will. So just take my word for it. You know? Fuck them assholes. They ain't shit. You thought I was gonna say something like, like insightful and like, you know, just, you know? Wise and smart? No. I'm telling you like it is, okay? Fuck them bitches. They ain't shit. They can stay the fuck on outside, let them be the assholes they are outside. Like Tiffany don't need to stop being a dick. She just need to be a dick over there and she need to not be in control of other people while she's being a douche, you know? Problem solved. I'm just saying. Mama's just telling you what she think, okay? Oh, thank you Tiffany, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Tiffany, oh, my God. Oh, I had Tiffany on my brain, never mind. That's why, oh, I was like, what the fuck? But I was just rambling about how shitty she is. Thank you Sammy. Thank you. Said I gotta go. Just got out the hospital. Oh, my baby's be hanging out in the fucking hospital all the time. I don't know, what is up with my babies? Mama's baby's always be in the hospital, but different reasons though. Different reasons. I hope everyone has a great holiday season. I sent you a paper. Oh, thank you boo. Oh, oh, my God, Sammy. You're too much. You're too much Sammy, you're too much for Mama, okay? Thank you boo. I hope you feel better. Just text me later if you got it, okay? Alrighty. Later Sammy. Hmm, ooh, 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 Mama love you. Yes, you do. Ooh. Even though she terrible at showing it, ain't she Sammy? I know. I know. I'm awful. I'm awful.
Approve items one through seven. Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle.
Trustee Carlisle.
Trustee Gray Everett. Then yes, and supervisor Henry. Oh, we did not, we did not. So sorry. We need a motion to approve one through seven. So sorry. We did it.
Oh, I missed that, yeah. It tells you, Sammy, uh, uh, gifted five memberships too. Let's see who got them, let's see. Buck Baby. Marcus Watts. The Real occasion Peach, Ms. Justice and Rory Senior. Everybody say thank you Sam. Thank you Sam.
Yeah, I, I think you have a motion, I think you have a motion, either the same.
Oh, my God. Yeah, yeah, they did. Thirty percent, girl. You too, taking, taking all of them.
So this is for the motion to approve one through seven, cuz that was the same, that's what she just saying. She don't call for all of them. Second, second. I'll second. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Carlisle?
Yes.
Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry?
Yes.
Alright. Uh, next on the agenda, of course, is public comment. Um, I'm gonna say a couple things and then we gonna call people from this list. Um, you come up and speak, you have three minutes to address this body and you can talk about whatever, um, we just discussed. First, I just wanna talk about, a couple of things was removed from the agenda, which was for Tuesday of December.
Oh, shit, Donna, thank you, baby. Look at that. Oh, my God, so much pink today. Pink is a rare thing. Okay? It's a rare thing around here, you know what I'm saying? Except for my Sammy. My Sammy drops those. My Sammy, she watch, she drops those all the time. My Sammy sham. Thank you Donna. Mama do appreciate you. Yes, you do. Yes, happy holidays, Merry Christmas and all of that jazz. All the things. All the things for the holidays, okay? Mama's a, like a procrastinator, like nobody's business, okay? Yes, she is. Yes, she is. I definitely appreciate that. My babies are so sweet. Y'all are so good to me. Ya all. Yes, you are. That's why you hit the like button, right? Huh? Did you? Oh. Oh, you didn't? Oh, you forgot. Oh, it's okay. There's still time. Subscribe if you're not subscribed.
One seventeen. One thing I put on agenda was to adopt the budget. The appropriation budget for the township for general assistance. Another thing I placed on agenda was to adopt the budget for the general fund. Those two items was removed from this agenda. The great thing that I was trying to push for all residents of Thorntown Township was the approval of supervisors one hundred percent property tax refund for all homeowners throughout Thorntown Township. A lot of.
Oh, my God, that was so funny. She, she made, she made such a big whoop about this. Like, well, how much it turned out to be? If you break it down per, like, like for, between how many people that there are. It, it was like, it's gonna be like fourteen dollars or some shit each. Like, she, she's making this, this big ass fucking deal. This money, like, they don't want y'all to get this fourteen dollars, you know? They don't, they, you see? They didn't show up here because they're like, nah, fuck them people. They not gonna get this here fifteen dollars. Tiffany, stop acting like this. Like, you, you talking about divvying up. It's like, I got a twenty dollar bill and I'm trying to give it back to the people. You know what I'm saying? Like, bitch, which person? It's twenty dollars. Like, after twenty people, we're like in change now, where, you know what I'm saying? Two thousand people gonna get a penny, you know? This bitch is diabolical. Do you hear me? She diabolical.
You guys may complain about your property taxes.
Fifty-three dollars. Exactly. This fifty-three dollar check she gonna give everybody. And that's if everybody gets something. Okay? This bitch is diabolical. When I tell you she diabolical, it's cuz she diabolical.
Oh, I felt the need to make sure I gave you, uh, some kind of relief for this holiday season. So that's what, that was on agenda. Also, approval of bonuses for all Thorntown Township employees. That was on agenda. And fast but not late, we had on agenda to approve and accept the resignation of Jerry Jones.
Uh, thank you Cory for the cash app. I definitely appreciate that. I do, I do. And. Evelyn, also, thank you, baby. Thank you for the cash app. Mama appreciate you, yes, you do. Yes, she do. She definitely do. She's an appreciative mama. Yes, she is. Yeah, yes. Oh, I replied to that. Okay, good. Thank you, babies. I definitely appreciate that. What is this though? This is like, who? Is that? How did I get that? Something else, I'm missing something. What am I missing? Let me see. We figure it out.
He's a trustee that quit, um, a while ago and that's why they kept playing this game and trying to hold down the clock where our sixty days, but we have never ever accepted the resignation of Jerry Jones. It has to come before this board for approval for us to.
There it is. Amy. Thank you, Amy. Got a cash app. Mama definitely appreciate that. Figure out what that big number was. And Patrick, I don't know if you're in here, Patrick, but I got one yesterday. Think it was, uh, yeah, yesterday from Patrick. I definitely do appreciate that as well. Very much so, very much so.
Seven for the clock to start. The clock cannot even start until you accept it. So that's the other issue, uh, for you. Also. Y'all just saw us display, uh, paying bills here Thorntown Township. It says my heart that we did not agree to pay bills for everybody that was a vendor. Everybody that didn't work for us. It's, it really hurt and I'm hurting for them, which I don't get the calls later because now they cannot have a great Christmas because they spend their money first to give us products and then we supposed to reimburse them. So when we don't reimburse them, we hurt them, little do people know. And it's really hurting everybody Thorntown Township that look forward to that food box like we did for Thanksgiving. We gave greens, beans, potatoes, you name it, it was in the box with the season, all that.
Greens, beans, tomatoes, potatoes. Tiffany. Everything was in the box and now watch this, little look. It's all about the box. It's not about the food. It's the box.
In the box, everything you needed, you didn't even have to go to the grocery store. That's how great that box was. So that you will not be getting for this Christmas due to the fact that the two trustees on the end, Chris and Carmen, y'all chose not to vote to pay for boxes.
Thank you. Chose not to pay for the boxes. The boxes, bitch. The boxes. Why do these people, I'm gonna tell you this. Those boxes are like the boxes that are used to like store away papers and shit, like forever. This, this, you wanna give these people this box with this food that's like, the, the recipe stuff that's for like a meal. Two meals max. Now. They're supposed to come and get this box and then next week, we gonna do the same shit. Go and have another video, then you gonna give away your food box. They gotta come and get another box. How many boxes are these people supposed to have in their fucking house? Why do they need to have this fucking box? That's why the box is so pointless. But them things is expensive. Them boxes are not fucking cheap. They're not. They absolutely fucking not. Just because Tiffany, why can't you print your name on a goddamn bag? Why can't you just stamp that shit on a bag, okay? There ain't much, apparently there ain't no food left in the food pantry, so Keith Price ain't got shit to do, okay? Why don't you get him to stamp your face all over some plastic bags? Okay? And call it a day. At his own expense, of course, because, you know, ain't nobody else paying for that shit. All because of the bag, not the food. It's the bag, it's the box. Like, it's, it's, she's like, no, they can't have the food if, 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 if I can't give them this box with my face on it. You know what I'm saying? My face and my name. All need to be on this thing, okay? Oh, my God. Jesus, this lady. It's, she's, she's weird.
For you to get food or food for the food pantry. Um, also the toys. Y'all know we get toys every single year. Your friends who Karani was here, every year, they did a toy giveaway. So why would we not continue that same thing here Thorntown Township? We did it last year. It was epic. We had it where it was like Toys R Us. You just walk in and you pick out what toys you wanted. Each kid got three to four toys. It was really dope. Um, people was looking forward to that. Finally signed up. They really heard about it. I've been getting calls all day as it relates to, hey, are you giving toys out tomorrow? Are we giving out the Christmas boxes tomorrow? Everybody's looking forward to that. So they heard that they're not gonna be getting those items tomorrow. Um, last.
Oh, yeah, hit the like button for Mama, please. The like button. Yeah, and also, if it's just because of the food, the, the boxes, cuz they're not gonna give out the boxes, so they're not doing the food thing. But it's not the food that didn't get approved. So the food was gonna come from wherever the food was gonna come from. but it's not the food that didn't get approved so the food was gonna come from wherever the food was gonna come from so what happens to the food like if they're not gonna give it away because Tiffany don't wanna give it away without the box with her name on it then oh that's right Keith Price's house is it Keith Price's house how funny is it they said the food pantry is the food pantry is is empty there's no food left in the food pantry Keith Price Keith Price could you step forward okay I have a question about the food pantry that you're over that you're the you're the leader of is now out of food could you tell me where where in fact that food went
we're gonna schedule a special meeting uh so that we can pass our budget in our tax levy before this year's out and of course we wanna do it the right way we are supposed to always pass a budget but we went the entire year without passing the budget cuz people play a pile of tricks the entire year so this is why we're here at this uh juncture as it relates to passing a budget and then passing your tax levy do not ever let nobody come and try to uh fool you into believing we should pass a tax levy and they increasing your property taxes you don't even know they increasing them for they didn't give you no budget they didn't give you no counter outlook of what the plan is for the year how we gonna spend the money what we gonna do with the taxes nothing but yet just push it push it push it that's all they're trying to do but pay attention guys because stop letting people
hey they just asked you can we go over this budget to go ahead and try to pass this budget and you said no you said no y'all had your chance that's what you said and then she talking about them kicking the can down the road they kicking that fucking can again y'all you ever see the like the the you just try to imagine like a little kid walking down the street just sad cuz cuz something and it's kicking a rock you know you you ever see the image of the kid that's like sad or something and it's like walking down the street just kicking rocks down the street whenever I hear somebody say kick a can down the road that's what I that's like what I see in my head is that like you know just kicking the rocks you know oh my god I can't take anymore Tiffany blaming and lecturing people have a great evening no Lee you got to stay you gotta stay you gotta hang out and you gotta listen to Tiffany just like the rest of us oh my god my camera look at look at this what my camera do y'all it's it thinks it's doing me a favor but it's not okay it need to sit the fuck still there now when I sit still until I put my hand and when I put my hand up it it signals my my camera that to follow me so I I'm animated so I keep accidentally signaling it but thank you is it Rekai Rekai Media Rekai but thank you baby I'm appreciate you yes you do yes you do indeed you do
uh tricked you because of all the chaos and you're not reading or paying attention educate yourself first before you just go off the uh house um next appointments let me be clear about appointments how they kept putting out this misinformation appointments works just like this all you guys saw me get appointed you saw Carmen get appointed the appointment is not sole person of one individual up on this board it is for everybody everybody on this board get to pick and choose who they want they either gonna get a motion or get a second or they don't get no motion or don't get no second or don't get no votes that's how this game go as you know a lot of people got their name thrown on the table and couldn't get a second let alone get the votes to become supervisor or to become the trustee so that's how that game goes it's not uh we's trying to prevent supervisor opinion from appointing I can only suggest someone just like everybody up here can suggest someone but you got a second and you got a votes to make that person a trustee just so you got the truth of how you appoint somebody uh way of board so what they're telling you is so misleading and it is all false it's all negative um I am seeking the removal of trustee uh Carmen Carlyle cuz she's a liar and I'm also
my name is Carmen Carlyle Tiffany here the only person up here lying is you
uh-oh shots fired she trying to remove oh this is what I was telling y'all about look 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 at uh look at this lady see how she looking at 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 um at Carl at uh uh Carmen see how she looking at Carlyle look she like it's like this it's like this is the it's like hold on let me do the whole shebang hold on let me really be her you know she like oh my god I'm going straight to Hades y'all I'm going to Hades for that it was worth it wifi was worth it oh my gosh she tripped me out like what is this look like it's like girl stop why is you fighting with her stop that this is crazy oh my gosh look she got that finger up oh my god she mean business you might wanna shut the hell up Tiffany you might wanna shut the hell up girl yeah Melly I had to get in the character you know what I'm saying I know Marilyn that was wrong I'm terrible I feel so bad I feel so bad kinda sorta not really just kidding but I do realize that that was terrible that's true now that is true now that thing I just said it's true okay Tiffany said I'm trying to I wanna get rid of her just because you brought it's like it's like I brought you in this world I can take you out that's that's kinda what it cuz she's the one who put her in that position now she be like okay now you need to go to fuck on you ain't doing what you was supposed to do
my name is Carmen Carlyle
Mrs. Jefferson
and I will be in court to remove them for neglecting their duties as trust
oh my god this bitch always in court like I'm going to go to the court today I gotta get some new shoes it's like bitch why is you going to court for shoes you're supposed to go to like the mall or something why the fuck is you hanging out in the court all the time it's ridiculous it's ridiculous with her friends you go girl you go straight to hell girl with gasoline drawers bitch Tiffany you let these people gas you up and not realize that somebody's walking towards you with a fucking match okay alright don't let people gas you up in the wrong situation it's like yeah that's right gas me up you know while you you know got a candle a lit candle sitting next to your feet don't let people gas you up at the wrong time bitch you get you get my metaphor just pulled that one off the top of the top of the dome it's quite genius that was a quite that was a really good one mama be talking out of her ass and every once in a while a gem comes out
they have not came to meetings for seven total meetings over sixteen seventy days warning uh three months now and y'all should not want anybody to govern your community uh like that were not coming to me whether you agree or disagree you either vote love or you vote anything you can't choose what it is
okay I got a question though cuz it's like chaos right now so every single meeting Tiffany said they didn't come in there that these people didn't these two didn't come in there because they didn't wanna because she's trying to vote in her um new trustee she wants to replace that trustee that that Jones guy so she wanted to replace him and she's like they're not coming in here because they know I'm trying to replace that position and even they said that they that she wants to replace that position why isn't that on the thing today like why are they not mentioning anything about this or uh maybe they are maybe that maybe that's coming yeah I'll wait until they say but I'm just curious cuz I've been I've been waiting forever to find out who this person is like I really am curious I'm super super duper curious who the person is that she wants to put in this position just because you know my theory is it's gonna be one of her goons like somebody who she didn't already put in another position like my theory is is that guy who's always carrying around her carts for her with all her paperwork and stuff whatever he whenever she come in a meeting he come in he got glasses kind of a bald head I think and he comes in with this little cart thing or whatever and you know I think it's him like that's that's who I feel like cuz he don't have a different position yet since he got laid off at at Dalton you know sorry oh the trustees made the agenda okay thank you look at that my babies are so smart I got that answer so fast yeah so the trustees made the agenda so that's why it's not on it okay got you got you
and we headed downstairs then when we headed downstairs they didn't show up then they wanna go to a conference hundreds of people at but everybody keep claiming they scared and another thing that y'all missed we had electoral board on Tuesday the central seven where we had the special board meeting they did not show up to the board meeting but yet Chris Gonzalez sat on the floor and did not even show up to the actual board meeting to vote for things and that's why you see this special meeting for you today so I'm pointing all these things out so hopefully those that really is paying attention you heard what I said people can yell say whatever they want it don't bother me all I want you to know is the facts the truth and another side don't listen to the lies and the manipulation and the board cannot move anything but keep doing other people's dirty dirty work um Carmen Carlyle and uh Chris Gonzalez they both work for uh Napoleon Harris
oh my god it's so funny that they both now work for Napoleon Harris all the pushback that it was getting all before like like three months ago four months ago five months ago nobody was talking about Napoleon Harris but these people were not working well with Tiffany and nobody was saying anything about Napoleon fucking Harris and now all of a sudden they're only doing all this because they're working with Napoleon Harris which one came first the chicken or the egg okay which one which one came first
if you had Thaddeus Jones those are the puppet masters behind all this
and that's the now Thaddeus is the puppet master
for at the township the township is doing great we have surplus I've said this I've shown this y'all have seen our audit report everything showed the surplus at Thorntownship
oh here we go let's see audit audit firm uh won't endorse Thorntownship financial report let's see oh yeah and uh this uh what we're watching here this is from the Lansing Journal of course you can tell because of how awesome the footage is and the audio is great and that's why they have the best they do the best job like it's it's like it's great to catch it when it's live but when you do that you're using you're you're catching in the perspective of one of the people like just kinda regular people in the audience and stuff cuz they'll be filming it live right but if you wait if you're willing to wait till the next day you get to you get to actually really kinda see it and hear what's going on because of the Lansing Journal so uh to support that channel I think is very very muy importante okay so the Lansing Journal it's a YouTube channel the Lansing Journal go over there drop a subscribe hit a like you know what I'm saying do what you gotta do do your thug thizzle okay support that channel cuz I mean they they like do actual actual fucking work oh hold on I'm gonna read this let's see so Calumet City uh the accounting firm hired uh to audit the Thorntownship financial report from the last fiscal year decided not to offer an opinion on whether its numbers added up the lack of opinion means the firm John Casprick um company I guess I don't know was unwilling to certify that that township's reports report was uh as accurate in a letter uh contained within the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ending February twenty-nine twenty-two forty the accounting firm indicated that it did not have enough documentation to confirm the numbers uh put forth by the township exactly they was giving them partial fucking shit gave him gave him just the stuff that they wanted him to fucking see and left everything else out but you can tell that there's things missing but they're too they they're too busy thinking they're smarter than every fucking body else to realize somebody's gonna notice some shit's missing and they just expect they that's what I said Tiffany has this expectation that she thinks everybody's dumber than her and that's bad because Tiffany well I I'm sure and so that's something I'm not very confident about is if Tiffany actually does feel smart does Tiffany actually think she's smart or is she just so busy trying to convince everyone else that she's smart you know what I'm saying like like does she really believe it and so she's trying to spread that knowledge that she's smart or is she hoping if enough people think she's smart then she too can believe it you know what I'm saying I don't know but I know that she likes to professionally try to call people stupid she likes to think that everybody dumber than her okay that's that's basically it
I give the child everything to look bad or be bad but it is not bad when I came over there I turned it around y'all had a four point six million dollar deficit when I came over there and now you have nothing but surpluses in every single account and Thorntownship under my leadership despite the credit that you might want to give me so I think I'm on an awesome job it's just shaping that my own people my own race uh tax me the way they do I just want people to know that I still will say I still will rise out of ashes like the people know that if we're gonna move on and we have a star child so we can do your business address and then we have another meeting that we have to run off to so we gonna
oh they gotta go do another meeting what meeting did they have another meeting huh what have I been missing around here me and this fucking job
I'm gonna give you three minutes go ahead
are we gonna start with the public comment Vivian Allen three minutes please oh and then on the child get on TV alright so I just wanted to um say thank you trustees for holding out for saving her last ditch effort to steal um we understand what's going on even if her supporters are not within we understand what you guys are doing and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts um when it comes to um this election I'm so glad that she not even on the ballot so we don't have to worry about dealing with her past and inauguration so um you know it's it's something weird when she just sits up here and spews whatever she wants to spew and think that she can just hulk down and degrade you guys but then nobody can say anything against her that's the problem with a dictatorship she said that she hate dictators but that's what she shown up here today is that she is a major dictator um y'all gotta make sure that since she's not on the ballot that y'all know most of the other dictator here because believe it or not she has ties with Christopher Clark and believe it or not Christopher Clark is running for supervisor with the full slate as well so you guys gotta understand that we have to make sure that we vote corruption completely out of the township the insurance for her being uninsurable that's ridiculous you wanna sit up here and lie and say that it's their fault that we don't have insurance no it's your fault that we don't have insurance and also when it comes to the toys I am sure that anyone that don't have toys you all have a town that gives out free food as well as free toys so don't just always have to rely on the township because that is what we call a public aid office anyway however you can call
y'all I just noticed I I may have had a troll in my chat I got sorry it took me so long to notice it but I noticed it and now you'll notice you don't notice it anymore but like you should just came in said one thing and shut the hell out you know what I'm saying don't come in and flood my chat on some on some on some troll type shit I'm gonna say it and then once I say it you know it's gonna disappear you know what I'm saying
all two one one you can go to churches it's other places that you can go for when you're in need it does not need to be the township all the time unfortunately the township is at war so until they get a new supervisor in place that's actually qualified then we can't worry about trying to pass a budget when all she's trying to do is the last ditch effort to steal thank you guys for listening
hit the like button for mama please please and thank you I'm gonna get to this lady in the green carrying this cane I have many opinions about her I can't wait to share them
Denise Clark my name is Denise Clark and I I just moved in this township and I haven't been here but seven months and for the seven months that I've been here it's just been war just war
okay anyone anybody wanna predict y'all probably seen this already cheater cheater pumpkin eaters okay those who've seen this already who already watched this without mama it's terrible it's terrible guilt trip guilt trip ah guilt trip okay those who haven't already seen this and don't already know what I I I feel like this lady is running for something like she's running for a spot like a trustee or some you know some some government anything like she's running for something that's my prediction that by the end of this she's gonna say my name is who's and such and I'm running for whatever but only those who had don't haven't already seen it only those who haven't already seen it vote one if you think she's vote if she's running for something or two if she's not this lady okay I'm gonna give y'all twenty seconds to put in your votes to see if y'all thinking what I'm thinking just based on like how she started out and what she got on like like these people be thinking they slick but they ain't they ain't okay there's a there's a there's a I wanna be a politician outfit and they be wearing it you know what I'm saying she moved there for war I know right she moved there for the war Lou said no Lou said no say them two miss said two okay we got a couple of twos we got a couple of no's in-depth gaming said two okay alright let's find out
I moved from the city I moved from the city thinking that I was gonna find a better place look you guys I came because I want to be a part of a township that's going somewhere We're gonna have to, we, and, 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 and I know everybody has their own, whatever. I, I just believe that some of the things from Dalton is filling over now into the township. And, 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 and another thing is, I'm thinking about those seniors that has to go to.
Oh, thank you Ariel, Ariel gifted five memberships, thank you honey pot. So see, we got one Monica Ortiz, Pam Ronning, Freddie McDonald's, Jelicia Marcus, want wrong is wrong, congratulations, everybody say, thank you. Thank you boo, I appreciate you, yes I do, I do, yes I do.
By Alice's. And they get their check at the beginning of the month, so they didn't plan for the end of the month. How do they get it to their appointments? You know, we can't just throw things up like this at the last minute, toys, fine, she gave us other.
Girl, look, Miss One said, never mind, one. See what I'm saying? You see what I'm saying, Miss One, you see, you see? I'm telling you, you can tell they be, it's a costume, there's a costume that people who wanna run for position, it's a costume they wear, you can tell, you can smell, hmm, they running for something. You know, like, it's like when your kid walks in a room and it's like, hey ma, how you doing? You know they want something, you know, like, it's like, oh hey baby. Oh, what, what you, what you need, you need some, whatever, whatever. Oh, this is that, this is that outfit, this is the outfit of, I've come here for something, uh, you know, can you guys vote me, you know, vote me in somewhere, like a position, so that I too can do what Tiffany does, you know?
Options, but when you talk about seniors and their lives and people that are gonna be hungry, we have to think about things like that, and yes, we just throw things out. But I just say, man, the best man win, but we gotta come in with resolution. We can't just keep fighting, let's come with some type of resolution and.
You know what, you know what sucks about these, oh, thank you Ariel, welcome, oh, and a tribe member. It's been a while since I got me a tribe member, it's been a while. It's been a while, I think I've had my same unicorns forever, like, for like a year, I think I've had my same unicorns for like a year almost. And then, uh, I don't think I've gotten any new ones, and tribe members as well, they're very rare, they're rare kinds, thank you Ariel. Thank you baby, I appreciate that, I do, I do. Made me forget my thought process when I was about to say something, what was I gonna say? Something about this lady. Oh, yeah, when people start lecturing everybody, it's like, this is the thing that happens in my job, right? Somebody will fuck up, like somebody will do something they wasn't supposed to do, not, not like, bad, like, like, like on purpose or something, but they'll just fuck up something, fuck up something, so to the point where somebody has to point it out. But, let's say, the people who dish out said, you know, like, information to let the person know, cause you know, all you can do is just tell them, right? So they won't do it again, so it won't happen anymore. They, instead of addressing the person who did it, where you know who did it, they'll bring out everybody together, and they'll just generally say the thing to everyone, which, which is, is, it's like, it's like, it, the problem with that is, is that if the person did do it on purpose, you, you, what you just said was make them think that people don't know it was them, like, and so they're probably gonna keep doing it, but, when you point out something to one person individually that they personally did, there's a certain amount of shame attached to that. And that shame is sometimes enough to keep people from doing something twice, you know what I'm saying? But you gotta be willing to shame them. See, like, this woman is saying, we need to come together, and this is the thing that people do. Like, this is what I was actually telling Jedidiah about, I feel so bad, cause he, he has hope, he still has hope in his heart for this. But there's no room for hope anymore. The assholes are here, so what happens is, you just gotta not get the asshole here, once the assholes is here, you, you're stuck dealing with an asshole till they leave. But trying to reason with the asshole is a waste of your energy, and your energy only. Assholes don't exert energy being assholes, in fact, they feed, they feed on everyone else. So they, they get stronger as all the chaos is happening. Right, that's how they feed, but everybody who's trying to fix the situation, they're the ones who are being depleted. You're being depleted of all of your energy. So, her doing all this, talking about like, like, everybody needs, we need to come together, we, 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 no, you need to stand right in front of fucking Tiffany and say, look bitch, okay? Fine, we get it, you're a bitch, we get it. Can you just cut it the fuck out for a little while, can you give us a little bit of a vacation from your shittiness, can you? Can you just stop, did your mother not hug you, did she not love you, like, what happened? Bitch, who farted in your cornflakes this morning? Like, this, this is the only way to talk to people like this. But when people come in and they act like we all need to work together, they've all been trying to work with her for three fucking years. And then you get to a point where you're like, okay, so, we can't just sit around and wait for her to start acting like she got some fucking sense, we can't, we can't, ain't nobody got time for that. So then they just start like, fuck her, know to everything she said. And that is how it goes, this is how you function in the world. Okay, best advice my sister ever gave me, uh, 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 feed people back the energy they feed you. It's like, I'm a nice person, so I'm nice to everybody all the time, no, that's great, originally do that. But when somebody shows you them as an asshole, that person, you're gonna need to present asshole-ish back, you could just need to mirror, basically mirror back to people that which they are. Like that kind of thing, it's like, that's how you save your energy, and stuff like that, like, that's how you do that. Where you're not in a position where you're like, I was so good to the, was so good to you, and you're, you know, why are you so mean to me, y'all? That's how you keep from doing that, if they were mean to you, just be mean to them. They're nice to you, you be nice to them, you see? And then you won't ever be like, how could they do this to me? You understand what I'm saying, okay? Yeah, she don't need a microphone, this lady, she's, I'm a professional asshole. No, that's right, me too, I'm ve- I could be very good at it.
Seniors, that's, that's, that's where my heart is. And during this Christmas season, let's have a Merry Christmas.
Oh, you ain't put your bid in, so now we'll never know, she might've just forgot to say it before she left. Oh, or maybe she's gonna try it later, maybe she's just trying to get her foot wet, she like, I just want them to recognize me, I'll come up a couple of times, and then they'll be, they'll recognize me at some point, you know? We'll never know, lady, get back up there and tell us whether you running for something or not, okay, our votes mean nothing now, you didn't tell us, okay?
Hi, uh, good afternoon, I'm just saying, good evening, but good afternoon. Um, I wanna start, and I hope everyone can hear me, by stating that Tiffany did the exact same thing when it came to the budget meeting, which is way more important than this meeting, she had that meeting one Friday at one o'clock in the afternoon. She was hoping that no one would show up for that meeting, so that backfired. But for her to sit here and talk about what they're doing, and she did the exact same thing, is the face of contradiction, hypocrisy, and just a liar.
And bitch, yes, and a bitch, don't forget the bitch.
Okay, you love to call karma, karma out of her name, karma's standing up with integrity, with professionalism, you know, she's, now she's standing in the fire, because you guys made this a hostile work environment. Every time she said, you beg her to come to a meeting, who wants to show up to this environment, Tiffany?
Nobody.
Bring chaos, somebody say.
Nobody, baby, that's who, nobody.
You know, if you love the people so much, why don't you step aside, step down? Look at us even, when we're talking to you, if you led people and ain't nothing we can do about it, why don't you look at us, acknowledge us, I'm just saying. Cause it doesn't matter, I'm still saying.
Oh, also I wanna point this out, like, yeah, pay attention to this, like, see, see, like this lady just pointed out, Tiffany puts her head down, I know most people notice this. When people come up there and they talk, Tiffany don't look at them, people always point it out, they're like, you don't even look at them and look at me when I'm talking, you don't have the respect to look at me, right? This is a thing she does, but it's only a thing she does when somebody's talking that's not in her favor. And that's gonna be getting proven there, and it's like, there's gonna be one of her people who's talking in her favor, a couple of them actually. You'll notice, you know who's on her, who's, who her people really are, by who she looks at when they're talking, watch. You, 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 you'll catch it, just.
There is a program through the state, if they are on Medicare or Medicaid, they can call and they can arrange rides to any medical appointment. So, this, this not, actually, this is protecting them, because why would we wanna put our seniors on uninsured vehicles? So, just to let you guys know, and you can research it, there is, um, rides available for people, you don't even have to be a senior, if you're on Medicaid or Medicare, you can give rides to any medical appointment, so just wanna make that, uh, clear. Tiffany, um, you know, you talk about, you know, insurance, insurance, you had a, a bid yesterday at the Melanie Fitness Center, was that place insured? Okay, I just need to know, was it insured, how did the residents get there? Did you bus the vet on uninsured vehicles? Because they were sure riding around town yesterday, there were several spottings of Thornton Township vehicles on the streets. Okay, whether they have insurance or not, they were on the streets. You know, and also, you know what, Tiffany, I mean, I hate to do this, I hate to call you out your name, but you are a liar. It's been proven over and over and.
Damn it, I thought she was gonna call her a bitch. Oh, I got so excited for a second, I was like, oh. She was like, I hate to call you out of your name bitch, but you done made me do it bitch, so here it comes. Tiffany, you are a liar. Wait, wait. You're a liar, and you ain't shit. People wonder if I feel, there's some people that would, would hear the way I talk about Tiffany, and would, and would get to wondering like, I wonder if you, like, do you ever feel like that maybe you should apologize, that was something that happened actually on, on Jedidiah's, uh, uh, a livestream the other day, but he had Keith Price and, you know, that Michael Smith guy on there, and, they were saying, like, they were basically going back and forth on who should apologize to who, right? And I'm like, it's just people who I'm sure wonder if I feel like, like that, you know, yes, Tiffany's wrong, but I should, you know, like, do you ever feel like maybe you owe her an apology, like, like I would burn? Or burn on the side of the road, okay, before asking for a glass of water that is in the apology to Tiffany container, okay? There's a glass of water in that bitch, and I gotta apologize to Tiffany to get the door to open, to get that glass of fucking water. I'mma burn on the side of the fucking road, hell, motherfucking, no. Not a bit, not a ounce, not a nothing, okay? She needs this, this is called tough love, if, if you could believe such a thing, this what I'm doing? This what I'm doing, this is called tough love. This is. It is, this is called tough love. It, it, it just is, it's like, I'd still do this in hopes that she will, one day, find some way to turn it around, but the point of it is, is, is that she know that she's not going to be able to convince everybody. That, oh, I thought I was doing the right, cause she gonna do the wrong fucking thing, she gonna steal, she gonna do all of this stuff, she gonna be evil and this, you know, divisive, she gonna be all of this stuff, until it can't, she can't siphon anything from it anymore, basically, she loses those positions. So then she's gonna have to rely back on the respect that she gets from her surroundings to try to gain some kind of, uh, following, cause she's always gonna need a following, this is who she is, right? But she's gonna have to gain it some other way, the only way out of this is gonna be to, to blame the people around her. They, I didn't know what I was doing, I had never been that high in politics, you know, being a trustee was different, it wasn't, you know, and the people around me were telling me, I didn't even pick these people, they were brought to me, and I, 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 I didn't, know what I was doing, and they kept telling me that da-da-da-da-da. To get sympathy, it's like, oh, well, she's not a terrible person, she just was in a terrible situation. No, the fuck she wasn't, you put a Tiffany anywhere, she's gonna behave just like the Tiffany we see today. You, uh, no matter where you go, there you are, I know you've heard that. I know you've heard that, every one of y'all, you've heard that, no matter where you go, there you fucking are. If Tiffany was a boat captain, the boat's fucking sinking bitch, okay? If Tiffany was a train conductor bitch, oh, you going off the goddamn rails bitch, okay? Hear me when I tell you, if she was the president, we buck. Okay, this, Tiffany gonna be Tiffany wherever she go, so this is tough love. She needs somebody to basically demonstrate to her that they can see her, like, you're showing. Your evil bitchy ways are showing, okay, and that's what I do, see, tough love. Did I sell you, did I sell you, it's true what I'm saying to you, though I'm not lying, but it is funny. It's funny and it's true, it could be both, okay, thank you Ariel, thank you honey. Got another gifted, gifted, uh, uh, membership, who got it, Carolina Mimi? Say thank you, thank you Ariel, thank you.
And over and over again, you talk about things that you turn around and do, and you, you basically justify it when you're doing them. Also, let me, before I run out of time, why are you trying to take our vote away, Tiffany? The same thing that you're advocating for, for the, because of the caucus, and the reason why you're not on the ballot? You're, 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 that same way that you feel like those voters were stripped of their rights, you're doing the exact same thing, not allowing the people to vote for the next trustee, that should be our decision, we have waited sixty days. We, we have waited sixty days, and now, now it's time for us to vote.
No, Tiffany, your time is up, okay, oh my gosh, oh my gosh. This bitch, I could never, these people have patience. These people have patience, you know, you know, I used to react to, uh, like, like, uh, you know, Daryl Brooks, if you're unaware, he's like drove through a parade, and, uh, the Christmas parade in Waukesha, right? And, um, I used to say like how, how patient the people are. Like, like, how did they not even say anything, we didn't even use it, we wouldn't, you wouldn't even hear people hooting and hollering in the back of the courtroom. And listening to this man, I'm sitting here like, how are you not throwing things, like? How are you not throwing the stuff? I feel like the stuff should've been thrown already, like, I don't know, I don't know. I just feel, this is, like, these people, like, the police haven't once, all this watching these we've done, I've never seen the police come and drag up, oh, wait, nevermind, Jedidiah. Oh Jed, but that's different, okay, that was different, he didn't like dive at him or anything, they just were walking towards each other. And of course, they act like they didn't see, you know, Holmes kinda egg him towards him, or anything, they like, they didn't see that, and they just dragged Jed out, you know what I'm saying? But, you know, other than that, like, the people in the audience, like, they, they, nobody's ever, you know, you know, thrown anything, and I'm impressed by this.
So why should I have to prove anything to them, okay? You're, you're not, you're, you're not my dictator, Tiffany. You don't have any more time, your time is up, your time is up, your time is up.
I'd be like, don't fucking touch me, I fucking dare you bitch, I'mma. Oh, you coming over here, well, let's see how far you gonna go. Alright, this meeting bout to be over, okay? I hope y'all done said everything you need to say, okay? He ain't even in security clothes, you just gonna, just gonna send over some. He ain't even in security clothes. You just gonna, just gonna send over some random dude over here to, to remove me physically? Okay, all right. Now check this out. Man, this funny, Tiffany's like, y'all, can, security, can you please remove her so we can finish our meeting? Security, can you just remove her? She is disrupted. She is, you, can you remove her? But when this woman come up here with a goddamn golf club, ain't even on a list, wasn't even, nobody called for her to even come up there. This bitch just, she just, she just popped up, you know what I'm saying? With a golf club, with a weapon. That's a weapon. Ain't nobody, there's no green around here, there's no holes in the floor for a ball to go in, and she don't even have a golf ball. Why the fuck she walking around with a golf club? That, in this setting, that's a weapon. It can't even be used as a cane, because the bottom would slip if you try to actually use it to put your weight on. You can't. It's literally a weapon. She ain't even supposed to be up there talking, and Tiffany says none of this. Tiffany don't try to get security, go get her out, which I would have thought was hilarious if security went to go try to get her out. But security wouldn't have because she was talking in Tiffany's favor. I tell you, I can't stand this bitch. I can't stand her, okay? It, it's not just her. Just so, also know this, it's not just her, it's, it's what she represents. It's who, the type of person that she is. It's, it's her type. It's her and her type. You know, there's people like Tiffany.
We just everyone in the building. And I'd like to point out something that's pretty vital to our village. Um, at the last caucus, there was, uh, one of, uh, Tiffany Henry's associates standing outside, calling people's names out as they approached to get in the line, the long line we had out there. That included a lot of, you know, I saw a couple of the buses out there that she had her people in there. Uninsured buses more than likely, but anyway. They could have easily gotten in line just like the rest of us. But the narrative that was put out there on television was that.
Well, hit the like button for mama, please.
They were locked out. I got there at five oh five. And there were plenty of seniors like myself. I am also a senior. So when I hear somebody take care of the seniors, yeah, 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 I've been taking care of myself for a long time. Let's have a lot of other seniors out here.
Yeah, this man ain't good shape too. He's in good shape. You know, you know, it's like some people get to a certain age and they just, they just take care of themselves the whole, their whole life? And you can tell, because once they get to a certain age, their body look different. Like their bo, their body don't look like it belong on their head with their head. Like they had this old face, like an older face, but then their body look like, you know, like a, like a forty year old in his prime, like, like, but, but his body prime. You know, like, that's this man. I respect it, you know what I'm saying? Because I'm sitting over here, I'm thirty, what, I'm sorry, I said thirty-six, forty-six, Jesus. Trying to, I tried to sneak off, try to sneak and throw away ten years. See, ghetto people are na, what's it, ghetto people are named after things they can't afford, like Tiffany's Mercedes Benz car. Uh, her middle name is Aisha. Tiffany's Mercedes Benz car insurance. Oh, what is it? What's, what's, what's the name of her car insurance? I, I, I know what you talking about, because like people who named Porsche, like Porsche, like Porsche, or, or like, um, what's another one? Lexus? What, what, what Kanye said? She couldn't, couldn't afford a car, so she named her daughter Alexis. Oh, Kanye, hilarious. Mercedes Benz car insurance. She don't have no car insurance for that Mercedes? No, that's a BMW. Yeah, see, I don't understand the message. I don't understand. Say, say, like, I think something must be missing from the messengerial. I'm like. Does she even drive a Mercedes? She don't drive a Mercedes? She drive a BM, they drive a BMW. Am I right? And then it's things they can't afford, like Tiffany's Mercedes Benz car insurance. Hey, me no understand, me no understanding. Let's see, Geico. But then what's the thing about the name they can't? If it's Geico, I still, us, me still don't understand. Okay, so, all right, so ghetto people are named after things they can't afford, like Geico? What, well, maybe I don't know what a Geico actually is, aside from the insurance company. I haven't, you, oh shit, Carolina gets it. I don't get it, Carolina. Can you explain it to me, Carolina? Carolina, could you explain it to me? Oh, here we go, here we go. She spent a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to lease a car instead of buying it outright for seventy-five. Oh, that thing, oh, that thing, yeah, 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 okay. What's that to do with the insurance, though? Never mind, never mind. It's okay. Sometimes things go over my head. Like, in three days, I'll be sleeping and I'll wake up and I'll be looking at something on YouTube, and then it'll come to me, okay?
The ones that are paying for some of, some of these, uh, situations that, that she's gotten us in. I'd also like to point out the fact that, that December third meeting in Dalton, uh, she got up and talked about respect. This woman would not understand respect if a Lisa Franklin came back from the grave.
Thank you, Don Eric.
No, no concept, no concept of, of respect. As far as these actors are concerned, whatever, you know, they, they have nothing else to do. They, they know they going with.
Oh, that's a good one. Hold up. Lisa Lee said, that's why she named her daughter Justin. After something she, she don't know nothing about, and she don't want, like, like, this, like, it got nothing to do with her, just. Oh, damn, that's fucked up. That's hilarious, Lisa Lee. Yeah, something she can't relate to, justice.
They're gonna leave with her. So we can just cleanse our whole township of these, of these, of these people that try to intimidate. We have people in here that, that ridicule, that ridicule cancel patients, but that goes right along with somebody that has a cancel scam. I mean, these people gravitate to each other. So it's.
Ooh, ooh, now see, all the people in the audience who's talking shit for, in Tiffany's honor. This is reaching them. What he's saying right now is reaching them. He's like, you know, assholes think alike. They all run together in the same type of clique. This is how assholes function, you know? And they in there like, fuck. She talking about us. Shit.
It's gonna be a few more months, but we gonna get our village and our township back. Uh, whether they like it or not is irrelevant. I'd also like to point out that, uh, the vehicles that they have operating, if you see Thornton Township vehicles transporting people without insurance, that is definitely a breach in the law. If you're giving events at a building in Dalton, okay, should not, should that cannot be fees and insurance for that building? I mean, this, our money is just going out, 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 it's just disappearing. And it's been proven over and over again. These, these budget, uh, situations that she's claiming to have, it's just the opposite. We have, we're getting deficits, deficits left and right. Uh, Lori Lightfoot comes in with her report next month. This should really, really be interesting, because some of the stuff that they're claiming will once again be shot to hell.
Hold up, who's sister? Wrong is wrong. Jana and Eve, her sister was there. She's about to speak. Who's sister? Uh-uh, uh-uh, who's sister? Wrong is wrong. Who's sister? You don't mean Tiffany's sister, do you? Because I didn't know Tiffany had a sister. If you mean Tiffany's sister, color me fascinated. I always wondered if she had siblings, like, because that's what I would always say. Tiffany has like only child syndrome. Shut up. Are you telling me that Tiffany's sister is in here and is about to speak? Oh my God. I did not know. I had no idea. I didn't even know she had one. I didn't even know she had a sister. So this is quite a treat. Oh my God, okay. Don't tell me, is she on Tiffany's side? Don't tell me. Don't tell me. I, it's gonna answer so many questions for me, okay? Okay.
They have no concept of what's going on here.
Ooh, he said, what I said, your time is up too, bitch. Well, I added the bitch, but yeah, you know what, you know.
Excuse me, I have to. I want to educate Tiffany Henry.
Oh, isn't that ironic? Isn't it ironic? Don't you think? A little too ironic. Oh yeah, I really do think. Uh, let me know in the comments, you know what that's from. Who is that? Who is that? That, that mama just saw. Bars.
They say she want to educate the residents, so let one of the residents educate her. The buses that you had yesterday at Melanie Fitness Center quote unquote police station having bingo, first of all, you should have had amusement license from the village with the consent of the board in order to hold that event. Also, trustees. I want to educate Tiffany Henry. She always say she want to educate the residents, so let one of the residents educate her. The buses that you had yesterday at Melanie Fitness Center quote unquote police station having bingo, first of all, you should have had amusement license from the village with the consent of the board in order to hold that event. Also, trustees, I want to ask, because there also was a bus there transporting residents. If you didn't have any insurance, were those buses insured yesterday evening at six o'clock? Well, that's unheard of, because that liability will fall on Dalton. And we have our own issues with, uh, Tiffany Henry. Okay? And at the caucus, you had six buses out there transporting residents. That was illegal. Let me educate you. You, you cannot transport residents on a bus to a caucus, to an event such as that. That's illegal. Let her know attorney that's sitting over there. Let her know that that's illegal. Please do, because she need to be educated, that that's illegal.
No, this isn't her sister. This is Valerie Stubbs. This used to be a trustee. She was a trustee too, back in, uh, back in the day. She used to be up there, you know, when the other mayor was there? This lady was a trustee at, uh, Dalton. Like, she used to be up there in the front. Like, you know, up there on that little thingy, whatever. That's who this lady is, Valerie Stubbs. This isn't her sister. This isn't Tiffany's sister. I'm assuming somebody else is gonna come up that's her sister. I'm assuming. Unless you were just playing with me, you better not have been playing with me. Oh, there we go, Elena's more set. Yes, exactly. It's like, yeah, on your wedding day, it's free ride when you're already late.
Illegal to do. I also, I want to know approximately why she's sitting up here telling the residents that the trustees up here will not vote on giving you a tax rebate. If you think about it, the last one you received was probably, uh, you might have received less. My taxes are extremely high. Here in Thornton Township, I received thirty-five dollars. So if you got.
Damn, she said, I paid a lot. And I got thirty-five dollars. So y'all probably got like sixty-five cents. Damn, Valerie, why you have to do them like that? Why you have to do them like that? Why, 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 why you have to do them like that? That's terrible. Tiffany, Tiffany, explain yourself. Alma, hey boo, how you doing? What's up, Alma? Hey, honey, pop.
Million dollars that you want to disperse upon seventeen municipalities? Think about it. Think about residents, how much would you receive that she's sweating them to vote on it, to make it look like she's doing something for the residents? And you're only gonna receive fifteen dollars. If you need fifteen dollars.
Oh my God, I'm saying that to be funny. That was like, it was, it turned out it was fifteen dollars. I thought like it was, it was given, it was given, it was giving very much fifteen dollars. So I said it, and it was funny. It's funnier when it's fifteen. You know what I'm saying? Funny, fifteen sounds funny, okay? She over here, they don't want, they, that's what, they don't want you to know that they, they don't want you guys to get all that money. Okay, they don't want you to get, get all this money. Well, depends, it's not gonna be, because it's not gonna be individ, e, um, even. Split even. It's like, depends on whatever you paid in your house taxes. Because it's just your house. It's like, if you own your home and you pay house taxes. It's the percentage that they get, that the town, with the Dalton or with the township or whatever, whatever. It's the portion that they got, which is barely a fucking anything. It's not like all the taxes that you paid. It's the portion that, that the Dalton or the township or whatever thing, their portion that they got. And so if you, if yours is like really low, like, there's some people who only pay like two hundred dollars or something in, in taxes for the house in a year. And then there's some people who pay like twelve thousand. You know what I'm saying? Thirteen thousand or some shit, like depends. So some people, it's gonna be sixty-five cents they get back. Some people. Some people might get sixty-five. This lady just said sixty-five is the high end, is what she just said. Sixty-five is the high end. So if you're one of the people with the higher wants, sixty-five would be it. And Tiffany's in there acting like people is trying to keep y'all from these millions of dollars, because she thinks they're dumb. This is why I keep saying, she is counting on them being stupid, that she thinks they're dumb. And, and when they fall for it, she's confirmed, right. Whenever they start fighting for the things she says that, that she's trying to get to them, she gets it confirmed in her head, okay, so these are the dumb ones. They'll believe anything I say. And these people don't realize it, so, I mean, you know, education. Who ain't that something? It's the three of them. So it's only three of them in there that's doing all of this hooting and hollering and making all this noise uproar for Tiffany. It's three people. So you know, you can imagine how extra they're having to be to make it, to, to like kind of consume so much when it's only the three. It's only the three. It's not like a room full of people are doing it. It's just these three people. So they're having to do a room full of work, you know? How much did they get paid? Okay? Lansing Journal, turn this camera around. I would like to see these people. We're gonna have to find another video footage of it, so we can. I know one is a dude, and I could. I know one is a dude, and I could guess what he looked like just by how he talked.
Your time is up. Senior. Your time is up. Your time is up. Your time is up.
Furnish your family.
Your time is up.
Some food for the family.
What's security, re-security back?
I am security.
Alright, who's next? Hey, we got stuff to do. We can't stay in charge. We got stuff...
What you got to do Tiffany? What you got to do? You gotta go home and have a talk with, you gotta have a talk with your boyfriend, that way he came here. He came here with her today. You know how I know? Because he walked out with her. He must have, they must, they must be noticing what's being said. It's funny, like... You're fooling nobody. I'm, I'm sorry Tiffany, you're not fooling nobody. Like, we started pointing out how it's obvious that there's some problems. And that your boyfriend gonna leave you and that you gonna be real sad, especially if he ends up back where he came from. It's gonna be a sad day for pick me, you know what I'm saying? But, you're not fooling us by doing that. Like, by having him come and stand there. You're not, you're not. This ends one way. I know what way it ends, okay? Oh my god, it's gonna be terrible.
Tamika Hanyard, come on Tamika. It's three minutes.
Oh, oh, she did say Tamika Hanyard. She said Tamika Hanyard. Oh my god, so this is the sister. She said Tamika Hanyard, y'all. Brace yourselves, fuck it, brace yourselves. I didn't even know that Tiffany had a sister. I didn't know Tiffany had any siblings. Tiffany very much acts like an only child. So if you haven't seen this yet, just brace yourself. We are about to see something. Those of us who haven't watched it, we're about to see something. I didn't even know she had a, I'm curious, even what she looks like, I didn't even know she had, okay, okay, okay. Alright, let's go.
After Tamika is Eduardo. Val, Val Quest, you can get in line, please.
Hey, I know y'all talked about, a lot of these guys here are talking about the different services, right? Thornton Township has been around for...
She got a, oh my god, this bitch has got her sister in it. She gave her sister a job too. Tiffany is diabolical.
A long time. A lot of people have been receiving services from Thornton Township. As the senior service manager, we service a lot of things throughout Thornton Township. It's very important for our senior service program to continue. We have vendors who have not been paid.
She kind of sounds like Tiffany a little bit, like... But softer, a little bit.
We do not have access to our desktops, current computer desktops right now, or we cannot provide all the services needed to serve the people of Thornton Township. I am asking and requesting the board today to please reconsider passing the budget, approving the bills. We want our lunch program to continue, and we would like all our other venues to get paid. I am asking you, please.
No, 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 no. Hey Tiffany's sister. Hey, hey Tiffany's sister. I need, I need you to do me a favor. I need for you to address your fucking sister. You need to address her. She did all of this. If she wanted to fix this, guess what? Fucking communication. Learn how to communicate. Stop being so fucking defensive all the goddamn time. Don't try to lecture anybody. You are the sister of the culprit. You don't have a right actually to talk to anybody else in here about what they should be doing. In fact, you have a moral, I would even say responsibility, to check the shit out of your sister. Okay? Y'all are womb mates, okay? Y'all are womb mates, okay? When your sister starts acting fucking crazy, that's on you. That's y'all. Y'all look crazy. Y'all are, y'all are a unit, okay? Y'all are a unit, alright? No, the fact that, uh, her, no, nobody knows Tiffany like, like she do. No, we, we kind of know Tiffany. This girl, oh, she know Tiffany. She, she could track back the childhood that Tiffany had to cause her to do the shit that she do. She knows way too much information to think that she can put this on to people around Tiffany. How many times has Tiffany blames you for some shit that happened in your house when you were a kid? Like, like, how many times has something happened and it was, but it was still your fault? It was somebody else's fault? How many times did you see that even when she was six, seven, eight, nine, ten? No bitch, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You, you notice I like, I'm actually kind of... I don't mean to call you a bitch, okay? Like, I... It's like, I can say it's a term of endearment, but not really, but it's, it's just a thing. It's just like, it's like, hey girl, you know, like... I don't even, I don't know how many times I can say that. You know what I'm saying? But it's like, like, I didn't mean to call her specifically bitch, like, it wasn't in my heart, let me put it that way. It wasn't in my spirit to do that. I didn't really have a reason to. It just came out, rolled out, because whenever I'm talking about Tiffany, I say it so much. But she is like, you are way too close to the problem to be thinking, pointing fingers anywhere but at your sister. You check your sister and then we'll, we'll have something to talk about. You know what I'm saying?
A lot of seniors will be affected. It's the holiday season. A lot of them will not have vendors members to provide for them. I'm up here, I'm shaking right now, because I cannot believe...
No, this meeting is from yesterday. This is yesterday's meeting. Mama was at work. Mama was at work and then I had a Christmas party I had to go to, like, for work. So I was not home at all to do it, and by the time I got home, I was so tired. I couldn't do it. So this is from yesterday. This is in another meeting that happened today. No. Somebody in your ass, sorry.
Everything that has went on today, I am begging you on behalf of the senior services department to please reconsider. Please.
Look at these three people fucking clapping. Y'all go to fuck on somewhere. Oh, oh, let's just point out the thing I was telling you about. About Tiffany, when somebody's up there talking, Tiffany's always doodling or looking down at the table. She don't look at the person. Unless they're speaking for her. Case in point, here she is, looking, looking at the person who's talking. This is how you know who's for her and who's not. So when that lady comes up with that golf thing, you'll notice Tiffany watches her while she talks. Tiffany watches her while she talks. You know why? Because that's Tiffany, that she's there for Tiffany, but she's just to pretend like she's unbiased, like she's from both. Like, she's just like, everybody's fucking up. No, that's not who you are bitch. That's not who you are bitch in the green jacket, no. Okay? You are a Tiffany fucking crony, okay? Alright, you are, you think you a fucking goon, walking around with this fucking, uh, thing in your hand swinging. You know what I'm saying? Like, 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 it's so funny, like, like, it's like when you be testing people and shit like that. Like, she walking around with this fucking, swing it. Swing it, just swing it one time in the direction of somebody, so we can find out who you actually are, okay? So we can find out. You know what I'm saying? Like, I, I hate when people do that. It's like, you want to look big and bad, but you didn't do, you didn't go far enough for us to really find the fuck out. You know what I'm saying? I don't like that shit. That's bully. That's bully fucking behavior. You know what I'm saying? Stand behind something with four wheels while it's in reverse. Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, the darkness, the darkness came out. Mama gets pretty angry at certain things, and that's one of the things, I, I don't, I don't like it. I don't fucking like it, hear me?
There were like seven bills that wouldn't affect any services that were taken off. So if Supervisor Hanyard wanted to support the motion, she could have, and all the bills could have been paid minus like seven bills. So I'm still willing to do that if she is, but other than that, if it don't, doesn't get paid, then, you know.
Exactly. So now what sister? Now what sister? Are you gonna address your sister? Are you gonna tell her, "Did you hear that Tiffany? We can get the thing paid that I need paid. Can you, can you, you know, act like a normal fucking human for five minutes?" Oh, oh, you're not gonna say that? Oh, let me guess why? Because you know she ain't shit and you know she can't be reasoned with. She know that. She know.
Um, that's not true. She need to pay all the venues. There's vendors on there that have in your department, and they need to pay everybody. Or CD are trying to put on a show and say...
Look at that, look at that. Look your sister in the eye Tiffany and tell her, "No, not even to help you do the thing you're trying to do. Well, I'll be reasonable." Stick to my story. No, 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 she need, they need to pay everything because I said so. Um, you know what I'm saying? Exactly. Three minutes up. Bye Felicia. Thank you worldwide, thank you. Exactly, that part. Your three minutes is up sis. Bye sis, okay?
Why we not paying everybody? It's Christmas. Everybody need their money. Give everybody their money. They did the work, pay them.
So I'm just, I'm just representing the senior services department right now. A lot of the people that we, that is affected by my department. I do support a lot of other departments, but on behalf of senior services, because I'm the manager there, it's the other department heads here, they can come and represent their department. Uh, we do service a lot of seniors that they go to other departments for services. However, on the agenda, it is, um, number two forty-six and two sixty-six. That's actually our holiday, I think, that's on agenda that was taken off.
I didn't announce it out loud. These are, it says potential invoicing rules. I did not take those off. I took off the things that were against or not in compliance with the image ordinance. That is the only things that were taken off. Nothing for senior services, the youth department, any other services were taken off. So again, my main devotion was to take off about a couple of things that aren't in compliance with an ordinance that the board created.
So I, so I could disregard this.
Yes, it's all a potential. I mean, because sometimes I have questions and they're answered to be them sometimes, so I got the answers to those, and so again, it wasn't taken off, so.
Alright, and it was taken off, but we give you the minutes after this, because we do got another meeting to go to, so do y'all can be caring.
For the record, you were trustee Gray, the one that voted no, not us.
We did vote no.
That's the bottom line. So don't try to say anything to prove anything.
Pay all the venues, pay all the venues. Stop politicking with certain venues. Pay everybody, so stop playing. Alright, come on, we got somewhere to go guys. We got one more, because then I gotta leave. I want you to think I'm not trying to hear you speak, so come on up here. I got another meeting that's supposed to be there at two o'clock. Remember, I only came here because I wanted to pay for the shoes.
Where's the miss? Sometimes I just want to have a miss.
K-Fox is next.
K-Fox, here I am. My name is K-Fox. K-Fox.
I said you're the next after him, after him.
I'll tell him about this.
Look at her. Look, look, I ain't looking like bitch, back the buck on. I will pay you, okay? Back, 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 back it up. Oh shit, okay? Look at her, she like, "No, it's my turn." Oh my gosh. That shit is, that was, fuck that, I need to see that again. That was hilarious. See one fourteen. One fourteen. Let's see that.
I'll tell him about this.
I am. You're next after him.
Alright, thank you very much. I'll tell him about this.
I am. You're next after him.
Alright, thank you.
That is the only things that were taken off. Nothing for senior services, the youth department, any other services were taken off. So again, my main devotion was to take off about a couple of things that aren't in compliance with an ordinance that the board created.
So I, so I could disregard this.
Yes, it's all a potential. I mean, because sometimes I have questions and they're answered to be them.
No, oh my god, I'm learning so much. I'm learning so much, you guys. Apparently that person who was trying to come up and steal the mic from the guy that's coming up in a second? Somebody in here said that was Keith Price's mom. Is that, is that true? Y'all let me know if that's true, because I don't know when y'all playing with me or not.
So I got the answers to those, and so again, it wasn't taken off, so.
Alright, and it was taken off, but we give you the minutes after this, because we do got another meeting to go to, so do y'all can be caring.
For the record, you were trustee Gray, the one that voted no, not us.
We did vote no.
That's the bottom line. So don't try to say anything to prove anything.
Pay all the venues, pay all the venues. Stop politicking with certain venues. Pay everybody, so stop playing. Alright, come on, we got somewhere to go guys. We got one more, because then I gotta leave. I want you to think I'm not trying to hear you speak, so come on up here. I got another meeting that's supposed to be there at two o'clock. Remember, I only came here because...
I wonder what the family meetings be like, you know, like... She ran off so fast, the sister, it was like, oh shit, she's mad, let me go.
I wanted to pay for the shoes.
Where's the miss? Sometimes I just want to have a miss.
K-Fox is next.
Oh, here we go.
K-Fox, here I am. My name is K-Fox.
No, 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 here I is, my ne- Bitch, no, she said, "Here I is." She said, "Here I is, my name is K-Fox." Okay, good for you. Look what the fuck are you doing up here? Like, go to fuck on. Oh my gosh. Here I is, my name is K-Fox.
K-Fox.
I said you're the next after him, after him.
I'll tell him about this.
I am. You're next after him.
Alright, thank you very much.
Look at that, I thought y'all was going by this. Like, I am. She like, oh. So you ain't even fucking look, is what you're saying. That's what you're... I hate when people can't be wrong. It's so, so weird. It's like, when you get caught being, doing something wrong and you, and you busted, like you busted. And you can't just be like, "Oh shit, my bad." You know how easy it is to do that? But you just can't? Do you know what a dick you have to be to be that person? It's so easy to just be like, "Oh fuck, my bad." Right? It's so easy, like, but people who just can't, they just can't. They're like, "Oh, well, the wind had made the thing happen, and that's why I thought that." No, bitch, just say you was wrong and go to fuck on.
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, my name is Eduardo Velazquez. I'm from the outreach department. Uh, back there are my fellow coworkers, and I feel like we haven't been very clear to the residents, because to me, what matters more than anything is making sure that you residents know what's going on in your township, which is the primary function for outreach. What we did was go knock on every single one of your doors, every seventeen municipalities we went and knocked on your door, to inform you guys about resources that you guys had access to. And I want to make this very clear, clear for everybody and anyone who's watching this on live stream or here in person. For us and our outreach team, it does not matter who are the trustees, it doesn't matter who the supervisor is or whoever's in that position. Our main goal is just to inform our residents about what is happening in our township. Whether they be events or resources that some people really do need. I've had people come up to me and cry because they didn't have food in their home, and I was able to provide them food box. For me, that's all I ever cared for and that's all I ever needed. So for clarity, what matters more than anything is that our township, our people, our residents get what they deserve. And our team here, my team, we, that's all we care for, that's all we push for, that's all we work for. Because at the end of the day, none of this is possible without any of you. You are our boss. You are the ones in control. You are the one who tells us what we can and cannot do. That goes for everyone. You are in control. Don't think that you're not, don't feel like you're not, because at the end of the day, I answer, and our group outreach is loyal to one group and one group only, the residents. Because they're the ones that matter. They're the ones who are consistent, they're the ones who are always gonna be here. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
That's very nice. Tiffany, did you hear that? Okay, good. Now stop being a bitch. It's so funny because none of this matter, none, nothing matters. Like, people can come up and they can say things that sound so great and wonderful. But there's like this weird, it's like, there's this thing in the room that is just stat, it's like static. You know what I'm saying? It's like, oh, we got, the phone people came in, they hooked up the phone, we now have a phone, you know, and, and da-da-da-da, and, and... Oh, look, now we can communicate with the world. We, we now have access, we have a phone. But then there's like something inside the phone, like rattling something, like a little, like a mouse inside the phone that's rattling some candy paper. It's like, we did all that we could do, but there's a fucking mouse in the phone. We can't hear shit, okay? Tiffany would be the rat that's inside the phone, just so you know. In that, in that scenario, Tiffany is the mouse. Just in case you, I lost you with that one. Some of my, some of my scenarios are not as clear and make as much sense as others, okay?
It's Fox.
First of all, my name is Tiffany Henry. I am the director of general systems and the...
Oh, that lady is really trying to get back over there. She, she like, "It's my turn. Now can I go?" Calm down, calm down, did it? Calm down, calm down, did anybody confirm whether this, this next lady who come up after this is gonna be um, Keith Price's uh, mom or not? Somebody do it, confirm that for me again, because I'm thinking.
We have been affected by all this conversation today. By food, we can't give it away because we don't have our bills paid. I sat there just now and my vendors are calling me on my cellphone. They stopped our food from being delivered. So guess what, ladies and gentlemen, we won't have food boxes to give out and these five young people can't go out and deliver them. We had to rent trucks, I follow rules, if you tell me we have no insurance, I won't drive. So therefore, I rented trucks for the company, for these men and women to deliver boxes to our seniors, to our senior buildings. I'm not asking for much, just pay our bills. I understand, image, but GA has a separate line item. Please verify that, that you can hold us accountable for that, because I remember twenty, I've been at Thornton Township since nineteen ninety-seven. I can tell you how Christmas bags used to be, I can tell you how we were.
Oh, wait, you could tell us how what? What was it? A Christmas what? A bag? Yeah, exactly. She said, I could tell you how our Christmas bags used to be. Oh, so you don't need a big ass white box with a lid for each individual person. How the fuck does that even make sense? That's dumb as shit, it sound like some shit that Tiffany would do. Like, you know, and, and, and she probably would do the bag, but you know, once she saw the bag with the stuff in it, it was like, yeah, my face is on the bag, but when the bag scrunches up with the food in it, you can't really see my face, you can't see my name, you know? And that's what really matters. Tiffany, Tiffany, if that ain't exactly how that conversation went, then I don't, I don't know nothing, okay? I don't know nothing, but that's exactly what happened. Hit the like button for mama, please, it's been forever since I said it. Hit the like button, I should have, well, I ain't no telling actually, the, actually, what's, what's the count of how many people are in here right now? My thing has been stuck saying five hundred and sixteen for the last hour and a half, so, I don't know, I don't actually know how many people are in here, I can't tell. Y'all let me know.
Bags to boxes, and now with boxes with closure on them. And guess what, we did start out with everybody's name, but we also had sponsor's name on that name. And as years progressed, we have only had the supervisor's name on the box. Please, we can't get anymore vendors, vendors, I'm begging them on hands and knees, literally, to help us, to give us our product, and all I'm asking is for the board to reconsider as well, to vote. I understand image, but please verify that you can do that. We also, just for image purpose, the letterhead, the township supervisor has a separate letterhead just for GA and always had had one. So please, I'm asking the board to work together to approve all the bills. I understand what you got an issue with, but please remember, it is the holiday season and I feel bad because if you go right now to the Zapp building, you're going to see a lot of stuff that I got, I can't give away. They're holding my meat hostage and I'm okay with that too, because guess what, they haven't gotten paid. And guess what, we can't pay the vendors, they can't pay their staff. So what's gonna happen to their staff?
Took them down.
Took them down.
So all of that is that all of you all consider paying the bills. We don't have internet service in some of the buildings. Security, you want security, they wouldn't even give us extra security because bills have not been paid. Please, ladies and gentlemen, the men and women out in the audience, it, it is enough pressure on the su, on them as well as the supervisors, but think about the pressure of not knowing on the staff. I just ask for all the bills to be considered, and I understand image, I hear you a lot of clear, but for GA, it's a different policy and procedure for that, so please consider that, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so very much and happy holidays to you.
Thank you, Miss Santana.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
My name is Kay Fox. I've been out here, I've been living in this township since my slow was sixteen.
Okay, so that's Keith, is that Keith you're talking about? Wha, what he look like as a kid? No, actually, I saw pictures of Keith like, not, like, maybe like ten years ago or some shit. He wasn't always, you know, like he is now, you know? He wasn't always, you know, you know, hiding food from the food pantry under his pillow, I will say, we'll say that.
He's fifty-one now. I never.
Damn, Keith, she done told you age. Too old to be acting like this, he is fifty-one.
Ever in my live streams, seeing the chaos, the backstabbing, the jealousy, the envy, the, I consider it, don't even consider the kids and the senior citizens because of your agenda. Everybody.
Okay, so he got it honest. Keith got it honest, it's not his fault, y'all. It's not his fault. It's not, it's not his fault. He got it honest, he, 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 he got the way he is, he got it from his mother. He got it honest, so, I mean, what, what can you say? He got it, he, he, yeah. It's with some things.
Everybody don't get along with everybody. Okay, but it got to be some type of reasonable solution that's bringing in all the outside people into our township.
They didn't bring them in. I don't know how the fuck I got here, I was, I was reacting to something, I did a live stream, I, I did a segment, somebody in my live stream mentioned this topic thing, I opened up the news thing, reacted to a clip of it and then just posted the clip as its own video, which is a thing I do if I talk about something offset, and it was like, I was like, shit, is this like a, like a thing, like what is going on with this? And so I looked into it some more and then next thing I know, it turns out Tiffany is very similar to Daryl Brooks in that they're both unicorns, you know where everything that they say is fucked up? It's like, how often do you come across a unicorn like this? Like where every scene, every time she open her mouth, something horrible happen. Like every time she say something, it's so crazy, it's like, it's the same thing with fucking Daryl, it's like, you could, you could just randomly run through, if it's her talking, clip it and just play it and react to it, and it's always crazy. Okay, Tiffany's a fucking unicorn, there are not a lot of people who fall into that category. So you trying to defend her makes you look like you're not even a unicorn like she is, you are like just, like, the, the, the people who defend it are, are, are just the worst. Like they're way worse than she is, like at least she has an agenda, like her, her ego feeding the beast. But them, they're like, just like, I don't know, they're like, ugh, like you don't even know who you are, you're not even your own, they.
They run the outside people out, it's running our township. Y'all so busy trying to stab Tiffany, that you got other snakes that's slithering in in here, like Tiffany.
Is the snakes are snivering in, is they? You got the snakes are snivering, the snakes are snivering, they are. She called us snakes, y'all. At least we physically can slither, okay? I think that's the word you were trying to use, let's see Keith pull that off. I'm guessing Keith can't sliver. The idea of Keith slivering on the floor sounds funny, I would like to, I'd like to watch him try, put it to you like that, okay? I think it would be pretty entertaining to watch him attempt it. Do I think he'd be successful? Hell no, but, you know.
He said, she was crazy, you got people flying in here, busting in here, just, just starting all kind of chaos. And another thing, if you not a Thornton.
Oh, there's an example again, you see what I'm saying? When somebody come up and they speak for her, she looks, she looks right at them. She looks right at them, which proves whatever she pretending to do when, when people up there who oppose her, she not doing nothing, she's just deliberately looking down to make them feel like, bitch, I ain't paying attention to you, I ain't paying you no mind, hater. That's the mission, but she's not actually doing anything, because if she was, she'd still be doing it now, you see? She would still be doing it, but she's not.
Township residents, you need to stay off of these mics because you don't have no concern about what's going on in our township. I don't care if your daughter got a partner here, I don't care if your grandkids got a partner here. If you're not a resident here, you should just stay with that.
Tiffany don't even live there, exactly, exactly. Since you lying bitch, I'm gonna call you that, I'm sorry, you lying, so, yeah, I caught you lying, so I'm gonna have to say it, okay? I'm not gonna apologize. Bitch, tell Tiffany, tell Tiffany that, okay? Tiffany don't live there either, and she over there grinning like a Cheshire cat. She don't live there either. She don't, okay? Oh my gosh, does she, does your boy, does your son, does he live there? Oh my god, you know.
While y'all back there hollering, while y'all back there hollering, let me tell you something, I'm leaving like this. Love you, Merry Christmas, and number two, uh, Mr. Uh, damn me, why you stick up here giving, flipping me off with the bird? Like I told you, your mama should be probably set on that one. Now, that, and you can cut that distance there, but you don't flip me, because you flipped your mama. Back there hollering, while y'all back there hollering, let me tell you something, I'm leaving like this. Love you, Merry Christmas, and number two, uh, Mr. Uh, damn me, why you stick up here giving, flipping me off with the bird? Like I told you, your mama should be probably set on that one.
Oh, she basically say, your mama, your mother. Oh, wow. Yes, Isaac, yes, Isaac, that was the equivalent of your mom, your mother, your mother. That used to be like the, that, that was like the, that was like the go-to of too far. That's how you go too far, like you, you could call each other everything that you could think of, the things that right now are the most insulting things you could think of in the whole wide world, you could go back and forth with somebody saying, I mean, the most atrocious, just horrible, disgusting, horrible things, and then a person just say, your mother. And, and, and now all of a sudden, it's a literally a brawl and the police show, like, like that? It's like the easiest way to escalate something, your mother. And I'm like, I'm like, oh my gosh, right metal? Your mother, my gosh, that shit is hilarious.
Cut that distance there, but you don't flip me, because you flipped your mama. And everybody that's in this world, that's a happy new year because I am. Thank you very much, fly your mama to the moon.
Oh, shit, they fly your mother to the moon, fly your mother to the, them is fighting words. I'm like, my momma ain't even here, how did she get brought into this, okay? If she was, she would call you a bitch though, just for, just so you know. She'd be like, oh, fly her to the moon, I will, let's see if you can't roll down the street bitch. Roll, 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 roll yourself gently down the street, take your dumbass son with you. Both of y'all ain't shit.
Excuse me, I'm gonna be a little more positive on.
Yeah, please.
Um, if anyone's in need of food, areas of Chicago, food and hospital, they can leave you a list of close facilities where you live at, so that you can call the number, the number is seven seven three two four seven three six six three. I repeat, the number is seven seven three two four seven three six six three. And also, as you know, they also give out Christmas stuff to people too. So, there are other areas for you to look into that will have gifts and presents, even Park District has something going on.
Oh Tiffany, Tiffany, she done came in, she still in your shine. She gonna give out food, she gonna give out presents, and oh my god, they're not gonna have your name on them. Imagine that, a Mr. Potato Head that doesn't have Tiffany's name stamped on its ass, okay? You know that's what that bitch do, you know that's what she do, you know, you know she do. If she give out a Jenga set, every brick got her name stamped on that bitch. Oh Tiffany, you ain't shit, she still in your shine, she's here, she's, she's still in your shininess.
So, don't be a dumb nigga that you lost, they always want to make you feel like you are living in the ghetto. We do not live in the ghetto. And the mouth, the mouth where they say that the dumb people uh, get for income is not correct. I do not make twenty-three thousand dollars a year. Even if I was on public aid, it's probably just as much. So don't be fooled by this envious, crazy ass shit that's going on. I get tired of hearing this every day. Every day, I see something on the news about Dalton and about you. You have no respect, this young lady right here should be caused by her name, they got all sort of names.
Oh, I know that, that, this probably threw Tiffany off. I thought she was gonna be nice to Tiffany, I, I can tell she wasn't there for Tiffany, she was there for other reason, you know, for, you know, to, to tell everybody about this other, you know, other options they had. But when it suddenly turned on Tiffany, I bet she was like, wait, what the fuck?
Names for you, you got more, they got more names for you than they do for her. You should be ashamed of.
Oh, and you know what happened? Here's the proof, Tiffany's looking at her, she's scolding, she's scolding Tiffany right now, but Tiffany's looking at her. Do you know why? Because Tiffany was already looking at her, when she was saying the other stuff, Tiffany was looking at her already, because it wasn't something negative about her, so Tiffany was looking at her. And then all of a sudden it turned, it would have been way too obvious if all of a sudden Tiffany started looking down. Tiffany was stuck looking at her. Oh my gosh, Tiffany got stuck looking at her, hey metal mayhem, what's up baby? Oh, that is too funny, she got stuck. Evian, she got stuck.
And I talked to you once before, I.
Hit the like button for mama, please.
I told you, you think you can say whatever you want to say and you think you will get away with it, you and I had that conversation. And you still acting like a little girl. And I don't understand it. You talk about seniors loving you, I had a lot of respect for you. I was looking forward for good things from you. In the long run, you have made me feel like an unhappy parent.
Tiffany, blank it, like, like I said.
You should be ashamed of yourself. And another thing, you don't have to put your name on your box, you could put Chicago Depository on there.
Holy shit. Exactly, Tiffany want her name on that goddamn box so bad.
And the taxes already passed, wasn't it four point nine nine? You need to just remember what you talking about, you need to go back and look at the videos like I do, I see you all the time. I listen to all of them, I went back as far as twenty sixteen. And you need to go look at yourself after you leave here, have a good day.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Nice, now see, that's how you do it, that's how you do it, you come in with some, something useful. She came in with useful information first, okay? Very solid, gave some information, some resources, so here, here's some stuff for you. Now, Tiffany, you ain't shit, do better. You're the worst, you're a mean. You're the worst. You're a mean one. Mr. Gritch, okay? That's Tiffany. Tiffany should've wore green today. The Christmas spirit.
Hello, everyone. Uh, Happy Holiday-
Oh, awesome. Tiffany was on Facebook Live three hours ago, three hours. Oh, goodie. Goodie, I have something to go and react to after this, since I'm doing this part live. I wanted to make something that I could post tomorrow. I think it's Hena P for the heads up. Thank you very much.
Days, Merry Christmas. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody on the board for coming out today. I'd like to thank the residents and the people who aren't residents for coming out today. I just wanna make something very clear. Uh, what I've noticed from this township is something that is amazing. It's something I've never seen before in my entire life, in all the cities and villages and municipalities that I've visited. I've never seen something quite like this before. You all have a gift, a rare jewel. You have a supervisor accident. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm not, I'm not telling you from what I heard. I'm telling you from what I've seen. You all have been there to see it. I was there at Thanksgiving. Just give me a second. If, if you were there at Thanksgiving, the food box getting away, then we can talk. But you weren't there. There was a line miles down of people who actually wanted the services that they already paid for. All these food boxes, it's not a handout. That's what you're misunderstanding. It's not a handout. You've already paid for these services. You're only receiving the services that you already paid for. It's like if you went to a grocery store and you got all the food in the grocery store, and then you go to the line to pay for it, but you don't have to pull out a check because you've already paid for it. Because you've already paid for these services. You deserve it. It's not a handout. You deserve the services. If you then don't receive the services, if you don't want the services, you don't have to take it, but it doesn't mean you don't deserve it. You deserve it. It's your money at work for you. At the end of the day, no matter how you feel about the supervisor, whether you like her or don't like her, it's okay. Because what you're hurting by not allowing people to receive their services that they paid for with their tax dollars, which is thousands of people, because I've seen in those thousands-
Yeah, you know, that all sounds great and, and, and wonderful, sir, but let me point something out. Let me just point something out to you, okay? Because, because you're trying real hard here, but let me just, let me just simplify this for you, okay? Yes, the people did. They paid when their taxes and stuff, that's what he means. They paid for these services. They've been paying for these services, so this food is not, it's not free. They, they paid for this, so that they, they earned this with their money that they paid. Yeah, we get it. But because Tiffany insists on giving this stuff to these people whom they've already paid for stuff, these people didn't ask for this stuff to be given in a box with her name stamped on it. That's a decision she made. And when the township said, "This is pointless money being spent on these boxes and printing your fucking name on them," Tiffany said, "Well, ain't nobody gonna get none of the food then." If they can't get it in the box, then also they ended up paying for, which is a stamped fucking box. If they can't get it in the box with my fucking name on it, then they can't have the thing they already paid for. Don't leave that part out. Don't leave that part out. But let me guess, you are gonna leave that part out. Because this is trickery. I'm trying to get on all y'all's good side, let you guys see if there's something, if, no. This bitch wants to make it seem like she's trying to do all these great things, but she will only give it to them if she can place her fucking name on it? Bitch, no. It's like, it's like, it's like, like Robin Hood. Okay, no, I gotta do an analogy, I'm sorry. It's like Robin Hood, right? It's like, okay, he robs the, the, the rich to give to the poor, and it's like, oh my god, look, this is, you know, the, whatever you think about Robin Hood, right? But then when he gives the stuff to the poor, before he gives it to them, you know, like he, you know, puts them in a box thing, and then, and it's got a little card that says, "Don't forget to thank the Lord for me when you be because," you know, like, it, it just, it's like, it's like, he, it's, it's something, it just takes away from it, the fact that you have to, why do you have to make it about you? And why do I have to pay for you to make it about you? Like, 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 I'm just sorry. The lady before even said, "They used to be bags." They were bags. Why do they need to be a fucking box, Tiffany? Why do they need to be in a box? And why does the box have to have your name? And why does the children's backpacks? It should've been a signal that something's fucking wrong here. It would've been her having her name stamped on all the children's backpacks at the school giveaway. She's giving away all these backpacks, but her name is stamped on them. They're clear, and, and it's like, her name, Tiffany Hager, it's stamped. It's not a sticker that they can pull off, it's on there. She had them made with that on there. This bitch is psycho, like this. That is some narcissistic fucking behavior, okay? Do better.
Lots of people want the toys from the township. The reason why is because the toys that are given from the township are actually better toys. The food that's given from the township is actually better food. Because those things are better, you're actually receiving more for your money. And because you're receiving more-
I could've received more if so much money wasn't being wasted on those boxes with her name stamped on them. Imagine how much, like, like, how much money they spend on those boxes? I shit you fucking not, you be shocked how expensive those fucking boxes are. Those are like storage boxes. Like storage paper, like file boxes. They're like those things. Them bitches is not cheap. And like, not even close to being cheap. Okay? Yeah, no. Uh-uh. Yeah, fuck no.
For your money, I'm trying to-
Please stop. Now I'm on the floor. It takes three minutes.
No matter if you interrupt me or not, I just want you to see, this is a rare-
This motherfucker is so annoying that even the camera can't focus. Like, the camera is like, "I don't know what I'm looking at." The camera's like, "I don't really know if I wanna be seeing this right now." I just don't. I don't wanna do it. The camera's trying to shut its lens, it's like, sir, you haven't even won the camera, okay? You haven't even won the camera's respect, okay? Hit the like button for Mama, please. Please and thank you.
Jewel, this is a rare time where you can actually receive what you're actually deserving for. So I really want you all to really reconsider-
Okay, thank you.
-everyone in the township. Thank you.
And just for the record, guys, we service over a hundred and ninety thousand residents. So when you see those people in here talking mad, them is not our people that really support Thornton Township. I have truly loved while the seventeen seasons, but I'm not. Good afternoon. My name is Pat. I am a resident of the Village of Dalton for twenty-five years. I have been a resident of Thornton Township for twenty-five years. As a resident, I am very proud of Chris Gonzalez and Carmen Carla for taking a stand to defend what is right on the long term for us as Thornton Township residents. I'm very proud of it. My second point is that when a replacement trustee is voted in for Thornton Township, we need input as residents. It should not be something where the supervisor besides who that will be, that should be the decision of the residents of Thornton Township. And my third point is, Ms. Tiffany Kenyard, I have known you for ten years. I met you when Riley Rogers was choosing a trustee for the Village of Dalton.
See what I'm saying? Look at her. Look, 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 now she's looking away. You can tell who the people are, who, like, 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 because when that lady with the green comes up, she's gonna, she's gonna be looking at her when she's talking.
At that point, I wish he would've chosen me to be a trustee. Imagine how different it would've been if he would've chosen a real leader like myself. Imagine that.
Oh, wow. Oh, she turned out to be the one who was running. Who saw that one coming? Not I, said the captain. I didn't see it. I didn't, I didn't see it.
But he made a mistake, and I do forgive him. But Ms. Kenyard, I am a mature person. I've watched you for ten years, my young lady. I am asking that you would resign as supervisor of Thornton Township. I've known you for ten years, and that you would resign as the mayor of the Village of Dalton. This would be for the benefit of all of us. This is my day of speaking. I have spoken. Please resign from both positions. Thank you.
This lady might be a little bit, she giving me, she giving me some Looney Tune. Just a little bit. She, I, 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 it's giving a little, it's giving a, it's giving a smidgen. It's giving a smidgen of Looney Tune. It was something she just said. What did she say that, that made my Looney Tune vibe thing go up? She said, let me see, let me see, let me see. She just said something that made me, made me think that. So, nevermind. I don't wanna have to go through all the original stuff.
Tiffany Kenyard, I have known you for ten years. I met you when Riley Rogers was choosing a trustee for the Village of Dalton. And then, but Ms. Kenyard, I am a mature person. I've watched you for ten years, my young lady. I am asking that you would resign as supervisor of Thornton Township. I've known you for ten years, and that you would resign as the mayor of the Village of Dalton. This would be for the benefit of all of us. This is my day of speaking. I have spoken.
Yeah, that was it. That was the little piece. That was a little thing. It was something in it, it just sounded, it's like, um, and it's like, it's like, it's like there's a nervousness happening, like she's, like, like in, like, in her, like she's, like she's struggling to breathe, but she insists on still doing it. So it, and, and then she goes, "Is this my moment to speak? And I have spoken." Uh, just seeing, it was just, that read, that read a little bit loony, like, like. That's just Mama's opinion. Mama, Mama, Mama reads things sometimes, and she, it's, I don't know, it's just, it's also in her eyeballs a little bit.
Please resign from both positions. Thank you.
Oh, she on live. This lady right here is, is, is got herself live streaming, she's live streaming herself while she's making the speech. Probably trying to figure, find her channel thing, so we can see what she, hopefully she not a hold the camera right.
In the name of the Father and the Son, uh, oh my god. I just got real discomplimentated. Uh, I'mma start with, uh, good Zen holiday to everybody. Uh, I have seen more than my eyes, but good thing I don't wanna stir up my ass. When it come to, uh, civilship, civil legality, stewardship, servitude to the people, that is you all's job. No, let me correct that. Your job, when you go out and get your paycheck, when you pay some of your taxes, because this here, this is service to us. This is not serve yourself. This is not cut me out of voting last year. See, my thing about appointment shift, y'all played a little game. Y'all played a nasty little game. You messed around with a hundred and ninety thousand people, and we're sitting here today looking at the trickle-down effects in every shape, in every form. It has affected everyone, everything, everybody.
Okay, you gonna tell us what the fuck they did, or, or you just gonna, you just gonna hope we know?
And every part-
Because we don't.
Every last one of these girls that's out here, I'm not gonna call no one. Because this ain't been about not wanting y'all. I don't care how long you just sat there, I don't care how many sat and dawdled. It ain't never, ever been about you all, because any y'all gonna take us in?
Hey, um, so any guesses if they scroll over to Tiffany, which way she's gonna be looking? Is she looking down, or is she looking at the lady?
Cop to ten people that I had to take over to the township last week, I don't have no cop. But I made sure the cop that they was in was in shoe. I don't care how y'all get it done. Y'all need to get that building back up. Because not a one of us signed up for any of this. You didn't put it in our vote. Some of us didn't get our vote. And I'm so malcontent with so much going on. That was once upon a time, didn't nobody know me. What about? What about? Once upon a time, didn't nobody know nobody in this room? But when it come to run elections, I have seen some of you elected officials. I have seen you all sit up there contesting something you ain't got nobody doggone business contesting here, nothing. I have seen people treat people in a manner that you wouldn't wanna be treated in. And you certainly wouldn't want nobody coming to your house treating you like that. And then you're standing at this public forum and make your whole goddoggone family wish they copy didn't know you.
Yeah, you're, you're neglecting your live stream now, uh, right now, lady. Uh, like you, you holding your phone. I'm sure it's pointing at, uh, maybe the window back there, maybe just catching your left ear, like. Focus. Which one is it? Choose a battle, okay? She done forgot. She forgot. It's okay. She forgot.
You don't know how to apologize. You want somebody to bow down? Y'all don't validate nothing for nobody else's life. Nobody can tell nobody who to love, who to stand with, who to speak up for, who to take care of, who to look out for.
Well, we can tell you. You just don't have to listen to us. Freedom of speech. It's a marvelous thing. You know what I'm saying? It's, it's a, it's a marvelous thing. The United States can be weird sometimes, but that's one of my favorite things about it. That freedom of speech ain't no joke. You know what I'm saying? Especially if you go to other countries, you really find out.
Y'all need to stop thinking that y'all somebody's judge, jury, and executioner out here. You entitled to your voice. You entitled to your opinion. But you are not entitled to go around obeying no other human being, making like that if they don't exist. And if somebody else has a-
The fuck, if I act like you don't exist, bitch, because I ain't see you. Hey, how dare you go to the grocery store and act like I don't exist over here in Kathmandu? I know you didn't see me, didn't know I existed, wasn't nowhere near where you could've found me, or would've known that I exist. I know you have no reason to know that I exist, but how you gonna just act like I don't exist? You ain't making no sense, lady. Lady, you ain't making no sense, okay? You just came up here to make a speech, period. Like, what's your mission? I'm gonna make a speech. What's it about? I don't know. I don't think it really matters. You can say whatever you want. You have the right, you have the freedom of speech, blah, 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 et cetera. But what you don't have the right to do is act like I don't exist. Does that apply to everybody? Because how do I act like everybody exists? I didn't know you existed until you just said that. So was I wrong yesterday? Was I wrong yesterday? Was I wrong? I just wanna know. Just tell me if I was wrong yesterday when I didn't know you existed. So I was functioning and speaking like I didn't know you fucking existed.
An opinion. You wanna dog them. You got this beautiful woman into something that is none of her making, all these people that come out here.
Oh, she beautiful? Oh, I wonder whose side she on? I wouldn't call Tiffany beautiful. I would say sometimes I like her outfits, though. And I would like to pick them up from that auction, if the feds ever do come and get her, and, you know, and they auction off her shit, you know, like. It's a couple of, couple of outfits I've seen that I like to yoink. For, for a nice price. For the, for, for, you know, for the, for the cheap, cheap, for sure.
To do what they're job is, they have a right to.
Your time is up.
You know what?
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all. You know what this shit is.
They never scrolled over, so we didn't get to see, but she was looking. She was looking at her. She was looking at her for sure.
Yeah, no, I don't stand at the pole, young man. I was way better than that.
There we go. Here this bitch. Here this bitch. Yeah, you, you heard me. Here this bitch. Here this jolly green motherfucking giant. Here it up. Bitch who got dressed in the dark. You gonna turn that light switch on next time, okay? Okay? To the point where you literally left the house for the fucking, what, what, what's so disturbing about this? Is, is that she deliberately made a conscious decision to grab this. Does she look like the type of bitch that play golf? I'm sorry. But does this look like a golf bitch to you? Cause it don't look like a golf bitch to me. I could be wrong. I mean, maybe I haven't seen all the types of golf bitches, but this don't look like a golf bitch to me, okay? She decided to leave the house with a golf club and come to this meeting. She made a conscious decision to grab that on her way out the fucking door. This is a weapon to scare. This is what, a weapon to intimidate, to scare people. Just in case they try to make me get off the microphone, they'd be too scared to approach, cause I got this here, golf club. This big, dressed in the dark bitch. No, 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 hold on. Like, before we get to this, Mama, I'm gonna do you guys a service. Make her bigger. Not that she needs any help with that. Just kidding. Sorry. My bad. I don't like her, so, you know, it's kinda like all the glove, the gloves is just off, you know? I promise to try to do better, okay? So, let me move myself. I'm gonna, you know what I'm saying? Move myself over here. Look at here, look at here. So this big bitch. Oh, she come in here with this club, with this golf club. She got, there it is, okay. So y'all see this thing, all right? She come in here with this golf club and she's gonna be, like, 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 listen to, as she tries to get the people's attention. So she just wants somebody to pay atten- Like, how you gonna miss this bitch? But she wants somebody to pay attention to her, I can't.
Hold on. We ain't gonna forget what Tammy Brown did, eh?
Look at this. We ain't gonna forget what Tammy Brown did either. Now she's like, shit, they're not listening. Cause they're, they're too busy arguing amongst themselves in the audience. So look, 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 look at her. She said, "Did you, did y'all hear me?" Oh, that, oh, this, this is so funny. She's like, "The same people that's interrupting this meeting." Now have you? This big jolly green giant that, that got dressed in the dark. She ain't even on the list of people to talk. She just, she just moseyed her weapon wielding ass up to the front, okay? And she talking about people who is disrupting the meeting. Bitch, you heard me, bitch. You tri- Look at this shit.
I remember when Riley fucking off is doing that shit, we started. But you got a lot to say right now. I remember that.
That's the end of the list, I believe.
Yes, the, the topic panel list, and I'm sorry, I missed drop down.
Why is it a list?
There's a list, there's a list because there was four new members approved.
When I tell you these types of people, why is there a list? They're like, the, the she ain't on the list. Why is there a list when they're trying to answer about the list? She's, wh- wh- where, where's the list? And I wanna see the list. Well, that's, she don't want the answer. She just wants to come up there and just be fucking loud. This bitch, okay? Ooh. Jedidiah put her on notice, oh. Yes, give me tell y'all something that I, that I told Jedidiah, that I've told him a couple of times, though. You know, I make a lot of jokes. In fact, I make all jokes. A little bit of serious accidentally seeps in sometimes. What I told Jedidiah, work that he does, it's important. I'll tell you why. Because if there wasn't somebody being serious about it, I couldn't joke around about it so much. As long as somebody's taking care of it seriously, the issue, because it is a serious issue. As long as somebody, somebody has to take the task of taking on seriously before I can then go in and clown the fuck shit out of it. You know what I'm saying? So that's why I say, you know, that work is very important. The research, she does all the research and stuff and he goes in and it's all, it's all the activism portion of it. I'm not built for that, okay? I would just wanna throw shit. Like, if I was in there, I would just want, I want like now justice. I want that, I want that immediate justice, you know? Like, bitch, you said the wrong thing and now here's something flying through the room coming at you. Y'all say like, that's where I'm at. That's where I'm at with it, you know what I'm saying? So we need those level-headed people and stuff like that. So, oh, I can't wait to, oh, I can't wait. Oh, good, cause this bitch is on my motherfucking nerves. So Jedidiah put her ass on notice. Ooh. Oh, you know what that mean? Cause Jedidiah exposed some motherfucking shit. If he put you on notice, that mean he knows some shit. Damn, I can't wait.
You made four of the list. You made four of the list. This board is, has.
Cause we all here for nepotism. He put her in, she put her in, and now it's a damn mess. You damn right you better, John, cause I'll tell the truth on y'all ass. I'll tell the truth on.
Five, you have three minutes. Go ahead, get your three minutes. You got your three minutes.
That bitch tried to been up there for three minutes. What you talking about? Go ahead, you got your three minutes. No, the fuck she don't? She's up there with a weapon and screaming and not even on the list of people to talk. You would, why, why, why you haven't called the security up to remove her like you did the other lady? Why? Why for? Why for now?
She's not on the list. She's not on the list.
Look at that. Look at this. So what? So what? Oh my God. Bitch, I hope you get everything that you fucking deserve, okay? And these, Jesus, whose pants are these? Cause they not yours. This bitch got dressed in the dark, okay? In the darkness. She must've got dressed in one of Tiffany's house where electricity got turned off, cause you know Tiffany don't like to pay no motherfucking bills. Hey, Green. Hey, Green bitch. Hey, Green bitch. Hey, what you, what you got going on? Oh.
Second to a jury.
Second to our charts.
And now Tiffany gonna say it again. You got your three minutes now. Now, again, this bitch got, oh, it started over again. Tiffany ain't shit. When I tell you Tiffany ain't shit, I can't give this bitch anymore airtime, I'm sorry. I just fucking can't. It's her in this fucking golf club for me. It's enough to make you just, you, you see, so you just wanna, you just wanna kinda knock them over? You know? You just kinda wanna see what it look like when they fall down. You know what I'm saying? Like, I feel like for Christmas this year, I just need to see what that look like, you know? I'm sorry. Bad mama. Bad, bad mama. That was a terrible thing I just said. I'm sorry, Grinch. You're a mean one, Mrs. Grinch. Them boots is suffering. You need to give them a break, get some sandals or something, cause the souls, they're losing their souls. Look at this thing. Look at these, look at, look at these poor boots. What did these boots do in their last life to cause them to come back to be this? They had them fucked up in their last life. It's terrible. It's terrible. This big bitch. She can't, oh my God. Oh, yeah, I'm gonna have to go check it out. I'm gonna go check it out. We've been on here for four hours, you guys. It's been so fun, huh? Oh my gosh, it's been so fun. Has everyone hit the like button? No? Why not? You gotta hit the like button. Why would you not hit the like button? Why would you, why for would you not hit the like button? What reason do you have to justify not hitting the like button? I really wanna know. So after she, she rambles on so much that the people just get up and leave. They all just leave. They're like, fuck it. She ain't gonna leave. Tiffany gonna keep telling her she got three more minutes and more minutes and more minutes. So they all end up leaving and then the lady goes outside and she screams some more inside the lobby about everybody except for Tiffany. But, but while acting, trying to behave as if everybody's fucked up, like her, like Tiffany and everybody's fucked up. But she never actually specifies about Tiffany, though. Ugh, get him his Keith Price's boots. Oh, that's funny. So I met Tiffany's, I met Tiffany's sister today. That was interesting. That was fun. Uh, Keith Price's mother. So Keith Price got it honest. It may not even be his fucking fault. He got it honest. He's a douche. He's a douche. You know what I'm saying? He got it honest. You know what I'm saying? He got it, he got it one hundred percent honest, right? Oh, all right, y'all. I'm gonna hop on off of here. Please hit the like button for Mama. Give me a thousand likes. Just do it, cause why not? You know what I'm saying? No biggie. That was an easy, easy ask, you know? You know, leave me a comment, you know, all that stuff, all that jazz. For everybody who's still in here, who was in here when I first started and is still in here, oh my God. The love, the love and appreciation that I feel, I feel for you. I think I love you. Oh, you think that's Keith Price's girlfriend? I can believe it. He found a woman that reminded him of his mother. You remind me of my mother, okay? Wanna spend my life with you, okay? All right, later, Gators. Catch you on the flip side. I'm gonna check out her livestream. I'm gonna check out her livestream on Facebook and see what's going on with that, all right? Later, Gators.